Good evening and welcome to the Santa Barbara School Board of Education trustee meeting Tuesday, September twenty, September twelfth. I'm trying to jump way ahead. For those, do we have any requests to speak for closed session items? Hearing no request to speak, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Every child, every chance, every day. Good evening and welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Trustees Meeting Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Welcome those who are in the boardroom as well as those who are listening online. Now we'll have language access.
Good evening. In order to provide language access, we will be having Spanish interpretation available through Zoom and here in person, and we also have ASL interpretation available on Zoom. Buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible por si alguien gusta escuchar la presentación en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Maldonado, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join us. Place the flag. We begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no announcements from closed session, and so we will go to the student board member report. Anastasia, thank you and welcome.
Okay, so overall, I'm feeling from my perspective and from what I've heard that the school year has had a very positive and a smooth start. Most of our schools have successfully had their back-to-school nights, and this was really important for parents to connect with the teachers because there aren't very many opportunities for parents to really meet with teachers. So I think that was super important. This year has also been the first season for the new CIF sport, Girls Flag Football, and there has been good buzz about this on all three of our high school campuses, and it's great to see students empowered through this opportunity. I would also like to recognize that yesterday was nine eleven, and at DP specifically, we had a flag tribute, and I think it's just important to continue preserving the memory of nine eleven at all the campuses. And this Friday also marks the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, and it's especially important in our district with the large population of Hispanic students. So I will be reaching out to other reps in the district to see how we can promote this, whether this can be through music, campus-wide activities, and just other ways. I was also informed about the Respond and Report Campaign to prevent hateful language on our campuses, and it's great to see building off of the IUE campaign last year. And I think that just connects to the basic concept of students all having the opportunity to succeed and feel comfortable at school. And I was told that all the teachers were trained on this, but the next step is just to make this a clear message to the students. And finally, I am working with Dr. Maldonado to start up the Student Advisory Council again, which is a group of students across the district to give feedback and further student ideas. And my goals are just to expand it even further with even more students this year, having clear agendas and making sure that the council is directed by the wants and the needs of the students. And in preparation for this report, I reached out to the representatives at the other schools, and Kian was kind enough to be able to come today and share even more information about SM specifically. So he will now be giving his report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anastasia. Thank you, the board. My name is Kian. I am the student board rep at San Marcos. So this year, San Marcos has been working towards a shift in school climate because COVID is behind us, and it's time that we start getting together and making high school an incredible experience for everyone once again. I talked to a few of the different departments of this school to hear their view on some of the highlights you've had SM this year. So for my report, ASB, under the new activity directors, Mr. Paul Herechetta and Ms. Taylor Karst, along with our amazing president, Kavya Suresh, which of course, you know, we have gained a far more productive system of to what has not worked in the past. It's already paying off. So we have a new script for ASB members to give their reports. We changed our meeting time to four days a week, introducing a zero, zero period, so we get more time to actually get the stuff that we're talking about done. We're also hoping to add some more positions to our ASB because we have a very small, relatively small ASB, only thirty people. And some of the ideas that we, that we talked about have been taken from the other ASBs like SB and DEP. So we're hoping to create a tri-school meeting between the three ASBs so we can share ideas and maybe organize group activities like that. So I talked to the activities directors as well, and their main takeaway is that we've done a great job of increasing school participation and retention on campus this year, and it continues to improve. So we've done our first two pep, pep rallies for lunch for games with new innovative activities like, like water games and stuff, and the attendance has actually been improving from what we've seen before, even with our new policy to allow the sophomores off-campus. So it's, that hasn't stopped people from wanting to come, which is great. We're also adding form, formal rallies to get everyone together. Social media has been huge and helped us spread culture. So the activities directors have taken on the, the school account. We've made a TikTok. It's blown up, which has been great. Even after, we're, we're having two dances as well. Sorry, we've had a dance. We have two more coming up in October, which is gonna be great, and more down the road. Even all the, with all the great activities we have managed, but on this year, we lost our biggest fundraiser, which was access, and it's difficult to find other means of fundraising due to the food service restrictions and stuff like that. But the increased participation has actually helped with the financial stuff. Athletics, Mr. Solis is recently stepped down from activities, and he is taking on the athletics role this year. He says that we've hit the, hit the ground running with all fall sports, and we've had great collaboration with SSB, SM, and DP. The, the athletics directors have done a great job collaborating. They're piloting a new service called Huddle, which is used to allow the different sports to record their games and watch them with integrated analytics. Girls Flag Football, as Anastasia mentioned, has really been a success this year. And they won their first game, lost against SB, but it was close. It was a lot of fun to watch. And some of his hopes are to resurface the field because it's been twelve years, and that's about the lifetime of, of the field. And some people respect to him, the desire to start new sports. We don't quite have the funding for that yet. But overall, sports is seeming to have a great life to them this year that we haven't seen in a while, which is great. Finally, the admin's perspective on the start of the year, I talked to the principal, Mr. Holdren, our amazing second-year principal. He says overall, it's off to great start. Test scores were up twelve point five percent last year, and we're confident that will continue to rise. Ms. Lambert, our amazing teacher, was chosen as the distinguished, one of distinguished new educators this year, which is awesome. Back-to-school night, as Anastasia said, went well. I was there. Teacher, parents really were grateful for that. We have had great feedback from teachers that our culture has begun to shift to more unified San Marcos. We have one of the highest levels of EML students. They are very good. We're very grateful to have them, but we need more support on that. So the students are put into cohorts, and the teachers need some more support to, to give them the help they need. The district has provided one, which is great, but teachers saying it's not enough. A big highlight has been the new bell schedule. So he was very grateful for the district approving the thirty-five-minute and the seven-minute passing period. That was, we've had a great feedback from teachers and students, and personally, it's really been helpful for me. So overall, the year's been great so far. We're excited for what's coming. This concludes my report. I hope to bring club members or other students to spotlight them in the future to help them spread awareness on what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kian.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much to both of you. We'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Anastasia and Kian. I do want to continue with the topic of nine-one-one. I want to start off by remembering the anniversary of September eleventh, which was yesterday, and twenty-two years ago, nearly three thousand people died in the deadliest terror attack on US soil. The day has since become one of the biggest days of community service in our country. I would like all of us to please take a moment of silence in honor of the lives lost that day. Thank you. I want to now turn our attention to introducing, we're very excited to have our new executive director of secondary services, Dr. Sonia Wilson. Dr. Sonia Wilson, as you know, comes to us from neighborhood district, Conejo Valley, and we're very happy to have convinced her to come join our team. She began at the start of the month, has been quickly jumping into the work, meeting our, our secondary school site leaders, visiting school sites, joining our meetings, and right away, giving us the wealth of her wisdom as part of that work. I would like to have her come up and give a few quick remarks. Welcome, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, to our superintendent Maldonado, Board Trustees, District Administration, as well as community members. So I'm honored to serve in this position as Executive Director of Secondary Education for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. I was drawn to the district because of this incredible leadership team that I have joined and the focused work on every child, every chance, every day. I'm committed to supporting our secondary schools and staff through this equity lens and continuing the great work that is already underway. And I thank you for this opportunity to serve in the position in the district, and I look forward to building relationships with everyone and also just to the overall work that's ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Board members, as you know, we have many, many events, many people to recognize the different months throughout the year, and we'll be bringing some of those to the board meetings today. I want to start with September as School Attendance Awareness Month, and we will be launching a campaign. I'll have the flyer come up in a few minutes. It will be called the School Attendance Matters. We know when students miss school, they miss fundamental reading, math, and social skills. Across the district, we will be promoting on time, all day, every day, school attendance. Starting a habit of good attendance will benefit our students in college and career, and it's never too early to start a new good habit. So you'll be seeing these around our school. We'll be working with families to ensure that our kids get to school every day. Next, I, I have some really great preliminary news to share with the board. As the new school year gets underway, I do want to celebrate some of the gains that we have made at the district from last school year's spring test scores. These are preliminary data scores that have been sent to our district by the State Department. The State Department usually continues to go through these and issues their final outcomes in October, but we feel pretty confident that the trajectory that this district is on is, is the right trajectory. You'll notice here that overall, district-wide, this is testing again grades three through eighth and eleventh grade. In ELA, overall, we have gained two-point-seven percent in the area of English Language Arts, otherwise known as literacy, and in mathematics, we went up by two-point-six percent. Next slide, please. You can see that more than half of the district is meeting or exceeding the state standards in ELA. Some notable schools for elementary, I want to point out that these schools made notable gains in these areas, and this is a percent growth from, you know, last year's scores to now in the meet and exceeds category. Adams grew by fourteen-point-four percent in ELA, mathematics by fourteen-point-one. Cleveland went up by nine-point-eight, and in mathematics by seven-point-one. Harding went up by four-point-seven, and in mathematics by seventeen-point-eight percent, which is an incredible gain made by the teachers at Harding. And I know that in my fall listening tour, I had an opportunity to listen to some of their concerns with the illustrative math program last year. So to see these gains is really a testament to the work that is collaborating between ed services staff, our teacher on special assignment, Dr. Schneider, our Denise Salvarado, others that have supported, but really the work of the teachers in improving those scores is impressive. At Roosevelt, we had a four-point-eight percent in ELA gain, and in mathematics, an eight-point-nine percent gain. Next, for secondary, we had notable growth at La Colina Junior High School in mathematics of eight percent from prior year. San Marcos had a growth, and I think, Kian, you spoke a little bit about this, and our principals are sharing these data points at their back-to-school nights and with families. They went up by six percent in ELA, three-point-four percent in mathematics, and Santa Barbara High School went up by nine-point-five percent in English Language Arts. You'll recall that we put in place universal access classes, mostly focused in ELA last year, or last year for the first time. And so seeing this growth really speaks to some of that effort as well. We really want to call out Dos Pueblos High School. There's their overall scores. So this is not growth for Dos Pueblos, but overall scores for ELA are, is seventy-one-point-nine percent, and in mathematics is forty-five-point-seven percent. So congratulations to the staff at Dos Pueblos High School as well. Additionally, we want to also call out several schools that are making significant growth in closing the achievement gap, which is also worth celebrating. This district demographics have sixty percent Latino Hispanic students as part of our school district, and we, then we always look at how they're doing in comparison to the other groups as the way to really measure some of the gaps that we have known existed for historically and for generations. At Adams, Latino students went up by twelve-point-three in Language Arts and thirteen-point-five in math. At Roosevelt, they went up by nineteen-point-seven percent in reading and fourteen-point-six in math. At Harding, they went up by fifteen-point-seven in math, again, speaking to that really focused work in mathematics. At Cleveland, they went up by nine-point-two in ELA and seven-point-eight in math. At La Colina, seven-point-eight in ELA and eleven-point-one in mathematics. At Dos Pueblos, three-point-six in ELA. San Marcos, two-point-nine in ELA, and Santa Barbara High School, eleven-point-one in ELA and three-point-nine in mathematics. At yesterday's meeting with all district leaders, we discussed the various practices that schools took upon themselves to gain these scores. Principals were able to share with other principals. We also had assistant principals, deans, district staff at this meeting. An example I want to share with you is Principal Jen Foster shared that while they were disaggreging, disaggregating their data, they also noticed that not only had they made these incredible gains, they moved students from the not-standard met out into the met standard. In seventh grade, they went, there was a shift, twenty-three percent. They lowered that to seventeen percent of kids not meeting the standards. And in eighth grade, there was a shift of twelve points where they had thirty-one percent last year, and that went down to nineteen percent. So school leaders and others are working to really disaggregate that, looking at about the different demographics. I only brought for you today for this report, otherwise I'd be all night with other groups, but so, some of what's happening with the bigger group. We, again, this is significant. It speaks to some of the work that's benefiting students, not only for universal access, but equitable grading practices that are being utilized by our teachers. These numbers, again, are preliminary, may change slightly when the final report is published in the FOB by the California Department of Education. There is still a lot of work to be done for both that, for ELA and math. We still need to improve these scores, but we are proud of the continued growth in the right direction throughout the district. It is a reflection of the work of our teachers, faculty, and staff, and we will have full reports for the board when the final results are released. I also want to inform the board that on September twenty-seventh, we will be having a visit from the California School Boards Association, who is going to review the PEAK program. Our district is a finalist for receiving the Golden Bell Award for the PEAK program as well. And I want to thank Dr. Sheffield for making that nomination on behalf of our school district. Next, I want to congratulate two of our teachers who were named distinguished new educators by the Santa Barbara County Office of Education. Ryan Helsel at Golita Valley Junior High School is a science teacher who is known for going the extra mile for his students. In addition to teaching his first year, he mentored twenty students for the Science Olympiad competition and shared helpful materials with other teachers in the district. Sammy Lambert has taught chemistry at San Marcos for two years. I see Kian already cheering here, fulfilling her lifelong dream of being a science teacher. Sammy is active in the teaching community and leads professional development for science teachers countywide. Please join me in congratulating them, and I'm sure that you'll, you can do that through email and other ways. As, as we opened our meeting, as our slogan shows and our vision statement states, we are working this year on really improving our climate and culture as a result of, the results of the Racial Climate Assessment Report. We know that there is a lot of work that to be done for how we include and help students belong in our school district. So this year, we're going to take a slight shift and in place of the Heroes of the Heart, we are going to now have an Every Child Award. The Every Child Award is going to be an award chosen by principals and cabinet members to highlight our teachers and staff who are going above and beyond and really displaying the spirit of what it means to touch every child, every chance, every day. So we have chosen several, four candidates for this award today. For Narice, we'll start with Chris Gallagher from Adams Elementary. She spent substantial amount of time connecting with her Tigers. That's what we call the students, Tiger Scholars, at Adams Elementary through identity work activities, a scavenger hunt to learn more, more about your teacher as a person, and classroom community building meetings. She is committed to supporting each individual Tiger all throughout the, the school year. And I saw community building meetings also at San Marcos. I just want to call out. So these are important ways for engaging students in how our classrooms will function and creates that sense of empowerment and belonging. Next, we have Luisa Figueroa from Monroe Elementary. During the holidays and during other celebrations, she always makes an effort to find children and families who may not have as much as others, but she will make a child's day special and will go out of her way to buy presents and food to make sure children don't feel left out or forgotten. And as I understand it, she's been doing this for many years. Thank you, Luisa. Next, we have Robert Thomas. Robert Thomas is a special ed teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High School in the moderate severe class for students with disabilities. He put together a very heartwarming slide deck that introduces students to everyone else in the school and explained their special needs. It was an absolutely wonderful introduction for Bob's thirteen students, and I had a chance to see some of those slides. And because these students oftentimes have one-on-one adults, they, as part of their introduction, they talked a little bit about what they need in terms of support from others if they see them around the school. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And last, Delaney is the co-leader of our Allies for Equity Group, which brings faculty members together to help identify barriers to student achievement and to take them down. As part of that work, she has played a large role in introducing our disruptor tool to combat hateful comments and training on our staff on how to use the tool. So these are, are members of our school district who we recognize for, again, epitomizing every child, every chance, every day. And that concludes my report to the board.
Thank you for that report. Board members, comments, Ms. Alvarez?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting. Well, it's been a few busy weeks. I've had the great pleasure to be at a few back-to-school nights, and I have to say, it's my favorite part of the job to be around students, around teachers, and it really reminds you as to why, right, the why. I was at Dos Pueblos High School at Adams, and the feeling, it's incredibly amazing. The principals are so proud of their school, as they should be, and the teachers love what they do. I had the opportunity to speak to several of them and with several of them, and I have to say, the common theme was, of course, their students and why they do what they do. And it just fills my heart with gratitude for the teachers, for the site admin, for all the classified staff, everyone that gets together and makes things happen for the parents and for the kids. So thank you, everyone, for that. And in addition to that, while I was at Adams Elementary School, I met two UCSB researchers, and it really caught my attention because what they're doing is this new project to improve the support for Latino and Hispanic immigrant families. And I said, tell, tell me more. What, what is it? What's your takeaway? Why are you doing this? And their research focuses on families that have been separated, where one parent remains in the country and the other parent remains in their country of origin. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to speak to those families, to speak to the students, to speak to the parent, and see what impact that has had, not only on them emotionally, personally, but of course, in their academics. And that really caught my attention because, as, as you all know, I'm overly focused sometimes on student outcomes and the test scores, and I can hardly wait to hear your report, Dr. Maldonado, in October. And it's a good reminder of all the factors that the students are dealing with that make it difficult to, to, of course, be at school. In any case, if anyone else is interested, they did give me a flyer. I'm happy to share it. I think it's such a good, such a good incentive to speak and also to see how we can improve services to our families. So that was, that was a bonus for me being there. And in addition to that, I also attended the Black Students and Families Symposium at Santa Barbara City College, and it's really hard to describe the feeling. You, you have to be there. It was the families, the parents working together with the students, with the faculty, with other instructors, and they, they spent a whole day together. They created a show. They created pieces of art. They had dialogue. I'm looking forward to doing that next year and also to see how we, as a district, can support those efforts more because it truly is a community event. I'm so happy I was able to be there. In addition to that, it's such a pleasure to read in the Independent when they showcase our school. I read about our three performing arts directors, San Barra High, San Marcos, Dos Pueblos, and what an excellent example of the good things that are happening at our district to showcase the talent that we have, and especially the programs that are available for our students. So that was, that was also a highlight of my few weeks here. And then on another, not so exciting, but very, very important, Dr. Maldonado and I have been working very closely with Senator Limone's office in regards to our Legislative Committee, which reports coming later on. However, early in the meeting, I want to acknowledge and I want to thank Senator Monique Limone and her staff for the quick response. I reached out to them. They immediately called back. We had a meeting, Dr. Maldonado and myself, with Senator Limone and her staff so we could express our concerns, we could express the potential impact that this might have on our district. They were very responsive, responsive. They followed up. To this day, they're sending emails, and that is representation. That is showing we care about you. We care about your community. So a big thank you to Senator Limone and her staff for, for doing that and for being so engaged in what happens in our district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. I've been gone for a few weeks. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back. My board report as a result is fairly short, but just wanted to say welcome to Dr. Wilson. It's good to have you onboard the team. Congrats to our distinguished new educators. That's really exciting. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, for the preliminary look at the data. I'm really looking forward to seeing all of the test scores for all of our schools and maybe getting a chance to see what the difference is between the previous year and the new test scores for each of the schools would be really nice. And then maybe if we can, focusing on those pockets of excellence and getting to hear some qualitative information about what did they do to, to see such great results, even if it's just for a few schools, that would be really helpful. Let's see. Only real update that I have is we met as the Housing Ad-Hoc Committee, and we are prepared to come to the board at the next board meeting. So I'm going to encourage my colleagues up here to get any questions ready for Dr. Maldonado so that they can prepare those for the presentation and be ready to answer any questions or concerns. to get any questions ready for Dr. Maldonado so that they can prepare those for the presentation and be ready to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. But it's really exciting work. I'm really excited for you all to see what we've been working on. And that concludes my board report.
Thank you. Ms. Menos.
Hello. Good evening. I'd like to congratulate the teachers and the staff at the schools that have contributed to the improvement in the student scores in the LA and math. The impact of this on students' ability to learn and their own self-esteem, I know, is of such importance in their lives, both short term and long term. I'd also like to appreciate the involvement of the students in campus life, both with our student board member and also the presentation given about student life and activities at San Marcos. I really, you know, give my full support and interest. And I do live like right about just a couple of blocks away from San Marcos. I'd be happy to come over and see, you know, be there for some of the like lunchtime activities or or after school sports. Thank you.
Ms. Banning.
Well, as I mentioned at our, at our last meeting, the start of the school year is always a positive time and a time of renewal and hope. And I'm pleased to hear the great reports about the opening of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. There are clearly good things going on in Santa Barbara Unified. Kudos to our school and the schools and our leaders who are doing the work to create the preliminary progress that Dr. Maldonado summarized in her report. It's good to see so many data points moving in the right direction. As she noted, there's more work to be done, but we've got excellent resources and dedicated staff at all levels who are focused on growth and student achievement. And there will always be work to be, there will always be work to be done. Moving in the right direction with the right people is how that work gets done. So kudos is modified to kudos and keep it up. As part of the, the school opening, I attended the back to school Black family cookout on August twenty-seven. I want to say that I fully support this event, which was put on in partnership with the Santa Barbara Healing Justice. And I support all of the district's partnerships that address issues of importance to all families and those that address specific groups of families. I suppose I support the exemplary work of the district in response to very real and specific and unique needs of Black families as have been identified in the district's transparent actions to combat anti-blackness and racism in our schools, including the creation of the Oversight Committee addressing hateful biased anti-blackness language and actions, which we'll be hearing more about in a report, in a report later at this meeting. I attended the cookout and enjoyed interacting with multi, multi-age racially racially and ethnically diverse cross-section of our community who were in attendance. I also checked in with the representatives of agencies who were there to provide information about the services available to qualified individuals and families of all races and ethnicities. They included Communify, Unifying Our Community Against Poverty. The PEAK Program under consideration for the Golden Bell, the Program for Effective Access to College and their After School Tutoring Specialties. Santa Barbara County Two-One-One was there with information about access in one hundred and fifty language to health and human services resources. There were folks from the Wilderness Youth Project. The Brazilian Cultural Arts Center of Santa Barbara's Kids Programs were represented. And the Santa Barbara City College Foundation's SBCC Promise for All Students Planned Parenthood and Voter Registration Resources were also available. This Black, this Black Back to School Black Family Cookout was promoted as an opportunity for Black families to connect with each other and with beneficial community resources. And I don't believe there was any promotion or communication about the event that was meant to imply the exclusion of others. However, with that said, I have been asked about whether communication about the event implied exclusionary intent. I don't believe it did, but the question is one that can serve to remind us about the importance of district communications that are clear about inclusion. I hope to see this event return and grow in twenty-twenty-four and to see that we take necessary care in avoiding unintentional implications of exclusion in our messaging.
Thank you, Mr. Banning. I won't have too many more additional comments. I just want to appreciate what has already been expressed through my colleagues very comprehensively. The congratulations and welcome to those who are coming. Wilson, thank you for being here, looking forward to you being a part of this district and thank you for saying yes to this district. We are doing good things here. We're doing a good start with that. We're doing the hard work and we're leading from the front. So eloquently spoke by Mr. Banning. And good work is happening here. It just continues to happen and to be doing the courageous work of leading from the front. And I too also had the opportunity to spend so many times with different parts of the community that were through these events that were there, felt so appreciative of the fact to come together. I know I was at the Black Family Cookout that talked, but we were so grateful for this. How we used to do this so long ago, how that makes you feel. And this was a very mixed and diversity, diverse community that that came out to support that as well as the Black Youth Summit included districts from Santa Maria, as well as Lompoc. We hope to continue to do that and bring in other districts as we have students coming in and families that are in all those districts. So to be able to come and and to support that and to see them working together and coming together and not necessarily seeing each other, not knowing each other, they went away having a contact and and someone to to call if they need to. So I really appreciate that. And all, and I just appreciate the student report that was given earlier today, Ken and Anastasia. Thank you for that, the enthusiastic way you present what you're doing. And it tells me how much you appreciate what you do. And so thank you for being the leaders at each of our schools. And so I also want to make sure that this year that that we really emphasize the words, thank you for the work that's being done. That's not often said, but really want to acknowledge that. Thank you for the work that you're doing because that's why the good work is happening. That's why the good work will continue to do. And then lastly, you know, I'm always up for a good pep rally. So let me know when you, you know, do that. And most of these two events also concluded with dancing together, having steps together. So we had some good things that are going on and I look forward to continuing to do that because this is the other thing. We lead from the front and we lead from our hearts. And so that's why we can have every child every chance every day. So I'll conclude with those comments and and now we'll move to public comments. Ms. Alvarez?
I will call your name and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Please correct me as you come up to the podium. I appreciate that. And each of the speaker will have three minutes. I will give you a warning when you have thirty seconds left. The first speaker is Ms. Roseanne Crawford. Is she in person or online? Oh, G four, excuse me. Okay, the next one is D nine for items not on the agenda, Mr. Eric Heinrich, please. And right behind Mr. Heinrich will be Zoe Guess. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Heinrich, can you pause? We need to get you on the mic. It's set on. You turn it on right in front of you there. Yeah.
Are we working?
We're working. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Eric Heinrich. And for the past twenty years, I have served as a professor of music and director of bands at Santa Barbara City College. I also served as the instrumental music teacher for Santa Barbara High School from nineteen ninety-nine until two thousand and three. And I am myself a product of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, having attended Galita Valley Junior High and Dos Pueblos High between nineteen eighty-four and nineteen ninety. I'm here tonight to encourage you to take advantage of a great opportunity that you have before you and to right a wrong that has been adversely affecting thousands of your students for over twenty years now. Please allow me to begin with a brief history lesson. In the early two thousands, the school district faced a dire budget crisis. So the school board at the time decided to lower their expenses by cutting the seven-period day at each of the four junior highs down to six-period days. At the time, it was announced that this would be a temporary measure and that the seven-period day would be restored once the budget crisis had passed. It has now been over twenty years since then. And still, each of the four junior highs only has six-period days instead of seven-period days. By only offering six periods each day, junior high students are not able to take the elective courses they want. It is those elective courses that greatly motivate students to want to go to school and subsequently motivate them to work harder in each of the other core courses as well. Music and the arts courses have been particularly hit hard by this decision. Santa Barbara Junior High's once thriving instrumental music program has dwindled to a little more than twenty total students now. And Santa Barbara High School's program has subsequently withered because of that bottleneck. Despite the, the district's very successful Bravo Elementary instrumental music program. I have previously spoken to the board about the need to provide comprehensive music programs that allow students to advance from elementary school to junior high to high school. The analogy of a plant is a good one. Clip any part of that plant below the flower and that flower will never blossom at the top. And with the new semester-long required health course for all seventh graders being added to the curriculum, the opportunities for junior high students to continue in music and the arts are becoming fewer and fewer. The junior high years are absolutely critical in expanding students' abilities in music and the arts, allowing them to flourish in high school, college, and throughout their lifetime. Imagine the long-term impact in denying a student's semester or year of math during those junior high years who are absolutely devastating. Fortunately, there is a wonderful solution to this program in the form of Prop Twenty-Eight. California voters have made their voices heard. They want arts and music education. Restoring the seven-period days at our four junior high campuses, you would drastically and dramatically improve access to these courses. An overwhelming majority of students, teachers, and parents want this and right this wrong. Make good on the promise that was made over twenty years ago and restore the seven-period day to our junior highs.
Thank you. Thank you. Next will be Zoe Guess. And after Zoe, Lisa Sloan.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Zoe Guess and I am an alumna from Peabody Elementary School, La Cumbre Junior High, and Santa Barbara High School. And I love the music department. Wonderful. And one thing that was, is missing is the Bible. This is so unfortunate. It was, it's so important. And so I just feel that it is really important to share with you who God is. That's what I prayed this morning. What's missing? And it is God. God created you. He created me. He created all of us, every child. And he loves us. He loves every single one of these children. He loves all of us. And he needs to be known. So I'm going to share the gospel. The gospel is this. God loved us so much that he came down, was born of a virgin and died on a cross. His name is Jesus Christ. And he rose on the third day. And he is here to set us free from all of our sin. And I just want to read this one piece of scripture from Mark nine forty-two. Whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him if a great millstone were hung around his neck and he were thrown into the sea. It was so sad that I never got a Bible. No one prayed for me as a kid. And God is missing in our schools. And the problem is not the darkness, it's the absence of the light. We need more God. We need God in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Sloan, please. And then Caroline Abate, please. And then Anthony Rock. Please, go ahead.
Oh, good evening, Madam Superintendent and Honorable Trustees. My name is Lisa Sloan. I'm a resident of Galita. On September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention signed the Constitution of the United States that has lasted for two hundred and thirty-six years. The U.S. Constitution established our national government and fundamental laws that have lasted longer than any other constitution with the average life of only seventeen years. The seventeen eighty-seven convention delegates formulated a structure of three branches, legislative, executive, and judicial, along with a system of checks and balances to ensure a government of, for, and by the people. President Eisenhower enacted the Observance of Constitution Week in nineteen fifty-six to commemorate the signing of this remarkable document. In two thousand and four, Congress enacted U.S. Code One-O-Six in Title Thirty-Six requiring public schools and institutions to provide information on the history of the Constitution. The law named, the law named September seventeenth Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. In celebration of this national observance, I've provided each of you a pocket Constitution and direct you to the National Archives website where teachers will find materials for their classrooms. Please go to archives.gov/education/lessons/constitution-day. The Federalist Papers challenge us with a quote from our very first Chief Justice of the U.S. Supreme Court, John Jay, who stated, "Every member of the state ought diligently to read and to study the Constitution of this country and teach the rising generation to be free. By knowing their rights, they will sooner perceive when they are violated and be the better prepared to defend and assert them." Not only should students learn the Constitution, but they also need to understand what was intended by its authors. America is the greatest nation on earth.
Thirty seconds.
One simple proof is that more people immigrate here than than leave. How do the students of Santa Barbara Unified learn what keeps alive the American dream? They must read and study to understand and defend the founding documents of this great nation. Thank you. And I have one more because I might not have given you enough. If you need one more Constitution, a copy, one more copy.
Thank you.
Does everyone have one?
Thank you. Ms. Caroline Abate, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In the current health education textbook, abortion is taught simply as surgical procedure to end a pregnancy. What are the consequences of teaching abortion like this? We need to be very thoughtful and we need to think carefully about any unintended consequences. However, before we begin the discussion, we need to first establish the humanity of the unborn baby. That is very easily done. We can see and hear the unborn baby's beating heart, the unique and distinctly human DNA, fingerprints, nerve endings, and observe the body shape, type, and size that is undeniably that of a human person. Now, we can understand how extremely dangerous it is to define abortion simply as a surgical procedure to end a pregnancy because that definition does not tell the whole truth. It is incomplete. Unborn babies are powerless to act in their own self-defense and must rely on others to advocate for them. It is also very dangerous because it is misleading and deceptive to immature young women in middle and high school. To teach them that which they may later realize with more maturity and life experience and information was a terribly wrongful thing to do. And now, as adults, they have deep and painful regrets. Will we ever know these women? Will these women ever come to this podium and will they speak? We need to ask ourselves if perhaps teaching abortion so lightly and casually to young students in the middle and high school age range is not such a good idea after all. A better path forward is to guide the precious hearts and minds of our children and young people to live a life upon which they can look back with joy and happiness, to guard and protect them and their precious innocence so that they only have good, positive, and healthy memories. And most important of all, for the safety of everyone, students must cultivate, schools must cultivate in our students' conscience a solid and unwavering respect for the life of each person, both born and unborn. This way, there is no confusion. Our communities are safe from murders and shootings and our young adults are protected from making any terrible mistakes.
Thank you. Thank you, and we have a good evening. Thank you. Mr. Anthony Rock, please.
So my name is Anthony Rock. This is the first time I've ever spoke in front of the board. So hi there. My daughter is at San Marcos High School as a freshman. And I thought she was going to be in an English class, but it's English plus ES, which I've found out is ethnic studies. So I was curious about what they're teaching in this class and essential vocabulary. Their first test, I have a copy of it right here. I wanted to kind of read through it with you folks and just make sure that you guys were on board with what it is they're teaching. You know, we prepare students for a world that is yet to be created. So I really want to make sure that you guys understand what it is that this is creating. In my opinion, it's, it's not unifying. So Martin Luther King Jr. believed that people should be judged by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin. With that, here's the first question. A belief that all people who are Muslim believe in violence. That's an example of prejudice. A teacher believes their Asian student to be more capable and organized. The teacher always puts Asian students in charge of group projects and tends to give students A's because they feel their work is high quality. That's an example of bias. The fourth question here. Matt, white heterosexual, middle-class cisgender male who comes from a Christian family feels very comfortable in his AP Physics class. And that's an example of dominant culture. A Chinese-American girl has a crush on a family friend who is white. Her crush comes over to her house for Christmas Eve dinner. And when they eat dinner, a traditional Chinese meal, the girl is ashamed of the food and hides how much she loves it, even though it's her favorite dish in actuality. And this must be an example of assimilation. Another question here is John, who is a black man, is more likely to be paid less at his job than a white man with equal qualifications, is more likely to be questioned by the police when going about his daily business, is more likely to face barriers to voting, and is more likely to experience regular and frequent microaggressions than a white man in the same society. This is an example of systemic racism. So I believe these test questions are divisive and they're not unifying. I know that they're full of grammatical errors.
Thank you.
So I'd like, if you guys could please try to improve the way these topics are taught.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. We'll next move to E1, Acceptance of Donations for September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion for acceptance of donations?
I move that, I was waiting for a presentation. I move that we approve donations with gratitude as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion second, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we're moving to our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull? Right, hearing no requests to move. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second. Move the second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. We will now move to our action agenda. G1, Adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty-three Twenty-four dash nine. Okay. Adopting the twenty twenty-two twenty-three GAN limit. That's our business service, O S C. It's Ms. Coming on.
Good evening. Let's get this, good evening, board members. I'm going to start this off right with a very exciting discussion about the GAN limit. What is the GAN limit? We'll get to the resolution in a second, just so that you understand what it is. We do this every year. It's a very interesting process because the voters back in nineteen seventy-nine voted on Proposition Four. And what Proposition Four did was to say that the, and it's called the GAN limit. It was to set kind of like a limit of the amount of expenditures that a state and local government spending can be. They're capped at the nineteen seventy-eight seventy-nine level, which I did the math was forty-four years ago, even though it feels like yesterday. So every year, there's an adjustment for population. There's adjustment for inflation. And even the school districts have to do this calculation. And what happens is then at the state level, when all the governments, local school districts, the state do this calculation for the GAN limit, if the state is spending more than at that level, then what's supposed to happen is that some of that money is supposed to come back to the schools and some of it's supposed to go back to the taxpayers. So what just happened with COVID? There was a lot of expenditures that were happening at the state level. All states were spending a lot more money. So the, the state then has to do this kind of calculation and figure out, okay, what are we going to do with this? So some money is then earmarked to go back to the schools and some money is earmarked to go back to the taxpayers. So we received some of that money in, in COVID relief funding that we all received. That was part of that. So it's just kind of an interesting little thing that happens every year. We don't typically have expenditures grow at that rate like we did with COVID. So we did our little calculation and it's just part of our reporting that we do with the, with our budget. And we're required to come forward and the, and you are required to do this resolution every year that just basically says that we've done the GAN limit calculation and the appropriations are set aside and that we're not exceeding the cap level based on all these different elements. And that's it.
Okay, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No speakers.
Board members, questions, comments? Here, and may I have a motion for approval of the resolution? We want to put the resolution up just to see if any.
Can you put it back up?
Thank you. While that's coming up, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three twenty-four dash oh nine, adopting the GAN limit as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we're moving to G2. And I also want to let you know that we're in the light of day. We're looking at the fiscal part. I'm just saying, not at the end of night. Well.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we are here at the end of the twenty-two twenty-three school year. And this is called the unaudited actuals. And the reason that it's called unaudited is just because our auditors haven't actually reviewed all of our, our actuals yet. And that usually we then, that's usually around December time period. Last year, it was a little bit later, but that's typical. So that's what we're looking at tonight. You should all have received this handy dandy, beautiful little budget and have reviewed it. So if you could, oh, I have clicker. I always forget this part. Okay. There we go. So this is where we are in the calendar of budgets that are required to be reviewed. We did the adopted budget for twenty-three twenty-four, and now this is the unaudited actuals for the end of the year for twenty-two twenty-three. Actuals just means everything's closed. This is where we ended up. And the deadline for us to have this approved by the board is September fifteenth. So we're coming in at September twelfth perfectly. And so that's where we are. So I did want to tell you, we are community funded, as you know, and the majority of our revenue is through property taxes. And I come up here almost every single budget and tell you, we don't really know what the property taxes are going to be totally until the end of the year. And they're, they're estimated as we go along and we get property taxes in a couple chunks throughout the year. So at our last, I guess it was second interim or first interim. I think it might have been a bit, at first interim, we came to you and said, this is what we think our property taxes are going to be because they're always a little bit behind our budgeting reports. And they actually came in lower this year. We were reduced by the time we got to the end of the year. So that's why I've got the little arrow that says reduction in funding by two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So that's not really typical. Typically, what happens is we come in a little bit higher than what the assessor's office is estimating. But we didn't this time. So that's a reduction of zero point one eight percent. That's never fun. So I'm going to turn it over to Lacey.
This chart is giving us a comparison of our unrestricted and restricted revenues. On the left, we have our estimated actuals, which we brought to the board in June with our adopted budget report for twenty-three twenty-four. And then on the right, we have our unaudited actuals. So these are the final numbers for twenty-two twenty-three. And as Kim just mentioned, you can see in the big blue section that majority of that revenue is our property taxes and that came in lower than we estimated. And then for federal revenue in red, you can see that that also came in lower than we had anticipated. All of that revenue, that federal revenue is held on what we refer to as the restricted side of the budget. So when we receive the funds, we can only record up to what we've spent. So any money that we haven't spent, we reduce the revenue and we move it all to the next school year. So that is the main reason for that decrease there. So in the twenty-three twenty-four first interim report, we'll see all those funds that we have received being added back to the budget with new plans to spend the money. In the yellow area, we have our other state revenue. You can see that we had a jump in the state revenue and that is due to a couple state block grants that we've received additional funding for those. We also received additional funding for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program as well as we received funds for kitchen infrastructure and training. So all of those are resulting in the state revenue being higher than we estimated. And then the last section there is our other local revenue and that had a decrease. As I previously mentioned, we received money from the state for an Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. So that is now our main source of funds for our after-school program. So this year, we did not collect any fees from the community for our program. So that is one of the reasons for the decreases. And then there were also a couple local grants that didn't come in as high this, this year. On the next slide, it shows our unrestricted and restricted expenditures. The biggest section there in the blue is salary and benefits. That is over eighty percent of our total expenditures. It also came in three point five million lower than we had estimated. That is due to less additional hours, both on the certificated and classified side, also less paraeducators and after-school staff. The next area is books and supplies. There was a reduction there that all of that reduction is on the restricted side of the budget. So all of those funds will carry over to the next school year to be spent. And then services and operating, also the majority of the reduction there is on the restricted side of the budget. So we'll be spending those dollars in future years. On the unrestricted side of the budget, services such as transportation came in lower than estimated. Our internet costs were lower as well as some legal and other contracted services. And then in our, all the other expenditures, that includes our capital outlay, which came in lower. It also includes tuition to other agencies, which came in higher. We have lease payments in there, which came in lower, and then indirect costs, which came in higher. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Kim.
At this time, we do not do a multi-year projection just because we're just talking about actuals at this point. We're not projecting. But I did want to put this up here because you're kind of used to seeing the multi-year projection and I wanted to update for the unaudited actuals, the, where we came in. So this sort of gives you a trend of where we came in on actuals from nineteen twenty to twenty-two twenty-three each year. So there's the unrestricted and restricted. That's the, the left side and the restricted only is on the right side. And if you look down towards the bottom there, it kind of shows you where we ended up. So we ended up with total reserves percentage of seventeen percent. And the total down there at the bottom, I don't know, could you zoom in just a tiny bit? Maybe they can see it a little bit better? Of the, the bottom, yes, good job. I'm thirty-eight point eight million there in the unrestricted and restricted is, is our reserves. So that's where we ended up at the end of the year. Okay, oops. Let's see, maybe zoom back. Oh, just a tiny, okay. So this is our one-time funds that are remaining. We received quite a lot of one-time funds that the ESRs and the Gears and the Expanded Learning Opportunities that we have spent because most of those were supposed to be completed at the end of the school year. So everything there that's in gray or the darker, you know, kind of a dark gray is what we have spent to date through June. And it just shows you that there's nothing left. We did a good job in doing that. Those that are still white are still ongoing one-time funds. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we have left. So the, kind of the bigger ones that we have left, we still have S R three, but it is going to finish up this year. So September thirty twenty twenty-four is when those will end. And then, so quite a few of them, if you kind of just look down the use of funds timeline, you'll see where they're all ending. The ones that are continuing on past twenty twenty-four is a E through G Learning Loss Mitigation Grant. We've got the universal pre-K planning and implementation grants. And then the Arts Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant. We haven't spent anything on that one yet. So that one is still completely remaining. We need to bring a plan to you before we can spend any money on that. And we're working on that. And then the last one is the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. That was the, the larger grant that was originally about fifteen million and then they, the state cut it and, and we needed to pay some of it back because they reduced the funding. And so we still have about seven point five million dollars left on that one. Okay. I don't know. It died. Can you? Oh, okay. We went, let's see. Go back one more. Thank you. So now we're going to kind of talk about where we are today because I do have enrollment numbers for you. So we did the ten-day enrollment count. So we actually really and truly are sites. Everybody is counting heads for the first ten days so we can see where enrollment is. We brought this slide to you kind of at the end of last year, but we've added now the twenty-three twenty-four enrollment count. So you can see that we are still in decline, but it is not too bad. We went down about thirty students from last year. So that's really pretty good as far as things go. And so the other thing I wanted to talk about was where we are with our class sizes. Because as part of COVID, we had, we tried to keep our class sizes low and we had funding for that to try to keep our class sizes low. And this year, this current year of twenty-three twenty-four is the last year of a side letter that we have in order to keep the class sizes low. So I just wanted to kind of show you where we are with our class sizes to date. So in the elementary schools, our class average, the number of students we have across all elementary schools for TK through three, the class average is twenty, and that is exactly what our side letter said was twenty. So we're right on there, which is really good. The contract, when this side letter, side letter ends at the end of this year, the contract would go up to twenty-five. So that's just to kind of show you where that step up would be. And then when we're looking at grades four through six, our class average and the side letter are at twenty-five, the contract would be thirty. So that just kind of gives you that that where we are. Secondary is a little uh different. So our um our side letter is to say, on average, through our our secondary schools, our class size would be thirty students. We are actually running at twenty-seven. And then the contract is thirty-three. So you kind of think, well, twenty-seven, that's three kids. It kind of doesn't, you know, that's no big deal. But if you think about it, um, a little closer, we have, let me get my numbers right. We've got over, we've got one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight sections, twelve twenty-eight. If there are three less kids in those sections than they would be on a normal situation, that means we have three thousand six hundred and eighty-four empty seats. And that's probably not a great thing. So even though our side letter is thirty, we have thirty-one secondary teachers in classes who have less than twenty kids in them. And some have less than fifteen. So if we're going to go to the place where we're we're bringing the class average up to thirty-three next year, we are going to need to consider to do some staff reductions. Oops, there we go. Oh, nah. I don't know. I'm having issues. One more. Okay, so due to the the class size reduction, the side letter that we have, we have fifty-seven teachers this year in classes that are um in the lower class sizes, which, you know, when you have lower class sizes, that means you have more staff. So we have fifty-seven more teachers in those lower class sizes than we would if we were at the contract levels. And then on top of that, we have another thirty-one teachers in secondary classes that are below the twenty. And then on top of that, we have forty classified staff that are being paid for by one-time funds. These are all very important things we need to consider as we look at our budgets. Because what we need to really be thinking about, um, how we are going to um wrap our heads around our budgets, knowing that our one-time funds, most of them are ending this year. So we are going to have to really work on that. I think that was our last slide. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Are there any requests to speak on this item from the public?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Board members' comments and questions, Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you, uh, Ms., is it Peters or Peterson? Preston.
Preston, neither one. I I know your first name.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. I, both of you and the rest of your team, you do an amazing job and I'm very grateful for the work that you do. I mentioned to Dr. Maldonado that we are very lucky to have both of you in charge of the finances. So thank you for your work. Then I I do have some some questions. If um I understood you correctly, we have about a hundred and twenty-eight positions being funded by one-time monies. Um, fifty-seven plus thirty-one plus forty. And in your projections, your multi-year projections that you have included here for us, have those positions been removed? Or are those continuing?
So in the slides that we showed, or if you actually look in the the budget or the unaudited actuals report, um, so we remove the one-time funds as we spend them. So if we have people funded in one-time dollars, once those dollars are gone, then those uh salary benefits, whatever other supply services are removed.
So the this numbers, this projections that you are presenting are with the assumption of what you know in the agreements that we have in place, that this will eventually end. How? We don't know yet. But that's, okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Then the other question is, the side letter that we currently have uh to have lower classes in elementary and secondary, I know in the past, we've had teachers that have come to the board and they speak as to the importance of having low class sizes. Uh, part of it was the because of universal access and differentiation that the teachers have to do. And they've told us how much they value that. And please remind me, have you put a value, an amount of how much that's costing us, the 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 class size reductions that we currently have in place?
Just the um, the fifty-seven uh teachers that we talked about, the class size reduction, that's about six million dollars.
So I, in my head, for some reason, I thought it was five. So I was.
I think it's it's a little about, little bit below six, about five point seven.
Yes. And in the multi-year projections, have you accounted for that to end as well? Those six millions?
Yes.
So when I look at these numbers for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, total revenue, two hundred and thirty-seven million, five hundred and ninety-five. Uh, total expenditures, two hundred and twenty-nine, one oh two, seven, one oh four. The difference is sixteen point four million. If I don't have any background, I look at this and I said, wow, SB Unified has six point four million surplus that it's available for for pretty much anything because it's it's leftover. Can you please explain how has this ending fund balance been impacted by the one-time monies we have received?
Well, the one-time funds that we have received, most of them are restricted funds. So um you can't, you have to use restricted funds in the way that they are meant to be used. So if we were thinking of, well, we have this growth in in one-time funds, can we just use them for salaries or can we just use them to pay people? The problem with that is that one-time means they end and paying people is an ongoing, an ongoing charge. So when we have reserves kind of at the end of 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 the, you know, at the bottom there, um, that's the reserves are really to be thought of as one-time monies because you can't really use reserves with ongoing expenditures to pay people, to pay, pay things that eat, right? But to pay people, we can't use the one-time funds for that because they will end. And once you use them, they're gone. So it's, reserves are are generally meant to pay for things that are um emergencies or that come up that, you know, you need to pay for. One of the things that we do know is our state's budget right now is is very, um, I've heard the word risky. This is a couple of times because we don't really know what those numbers are yet. There are still tax filings to be done by October. And and the state is still trying to see what sort of revenue is going to come in. So there are things within our budget that are kind of risky and we can't just think that we can spend those one-time reserves just like that because once they're spent, they're gone.
Thank you. And when you close the books, you mentioned everything is closed. Can you give us a little bit of a, just a brief summary of deferred expenditures? Because at, when you close the books, you pretty much know your property tax revenue, which in this case, it was less than expected. Uh, one important point to to keep in mind is that this past year was an unusual year of growth. The property, the turnover of properties in Santa Barbara was unusually high because we saw the benefits of unfortunately COVID. But it was good for Santa Barbara because so many people chose to live here, that they moved here, they bought properties. And now we're seeing the results of that property tax revenue. And as you mentioned, that's slowing down. So even though we experienced this great growth this uh year that we closed, now your projections say five percent, which I think it's really, really good projection. Can you tell us a little bit about any deferred expenditures from last year to this year? That uh any things in progress or are the sixteen million uh revenue or expenditures done? And say, yes, we don't have any deferred expenditures from that?
Um, the only thing that I can think of off the top of my head would be, um, there was some curriculum that was approved towards the end of the year, last school year, May, June. Um, so not all of that curriculum was received by June thirtieth. So now um we'll have to pay for that curriculum when it was received in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So that was, you know, around a million, a little over a million, but um that's all I can think of off the top of my head.
So this sixteen million, we might have to pay an additional million for deferred expenditures. So that's good to know. Thank you. And one thing I've noticed this past couple of years, if my memory serves me well, is the books and supplies budget has ended less than expected. Uh, we were expecting thirteen port, thirteen point four million in expenditures. We ended in with nine million. Is is maybe this deferred expenditure is one of those reasons?
So that would be one of them. And then um a lot of times when we have, like I was mentioning earlier, we have the carryover from from prior years. So a lot of times we'll put that in um instructional supplies. So we have it somewhere on the books. Um, but then if we don't spend it, then it gets gets removed and then it'll be put back on in the following year.
Great. Well, thank you. I I'll let my colleagues ask other questions. I do have one ask, Dr. Maldonado. Um, I'm hoping that we'll get our enrollment by site report. Hopefully, the second week of October, not the second week, excuse me, the second meeting in October, once C-Beds has been done. And I'm very much interested in seeing maybe the last past three years enrollment by site because I think that's an extremely important data point as we talk about what Ms. Hernandez said, the staffing and the small class sizes and that's connecting all the dots. So I'm hoping that hopefully maybe the second meeting in October.
I will double check. I believe it's in our governance calendar.
I think so. I think it's in October. I just don't want to miss it.
You won't miss it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you both.
Additional questions from board members? Thank you. I just had, thank you again. I want to echo Ms. Alvarez. I come, thank you for the work that you do and so diligent in that. Uh, I just have one question on, I think it was on your uh slide that talked about where we had estimated a hundred and eighty-three million, I believe. Um, in staffing, which is the large blue, right, that staffing? And that it was then less than in the audit. So is that reflective of open positions? The fact that we still can't fill positions, does it reflect that or different?
So it's a combination of, um, so when I was reviewing the numbers, there were, uh, we had budgeted for kind of additional um hours for certificate and click, certificated and classified staff for various reasons that that those didn't happen. And then there were also vacancies within the special ed, para-educator, para-educator space. Um, and then as well as vacancies in the after-school staffing.
And so uh, thank you for this. So and when we are we, so that difference in expenditure here, will we be used when we're able to fill those positions? Or or it just kind of goes in the general pot?
Well, one of the things that we do throughout the year when we have vacancies, we use that money for um temp, if we hire temp agencies to fill those staffing needs. So that's one of the places where we use it. Um, at the end of the year, we just basically clean it out and say, you know, this is where we landed. Um, so that's where you'll see the differences.
Okay, so I I would just add or or for consideration that we talk about that. So when we we have less than we anticipated, does it reflect or align with the fact that we're still trying to fill positions? And then when we do, they're filled out of that money. It's not coming in additional pot or reducing. So if we could just add that as a, I don't ask it to that point, could be great. Again, so any additional questions from board members? Hearing none may have a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the unaudited actuals as presented and thank you again.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you again for your presentation. So I'm going to do some agenda management here. Um, be patient with me, team and staff. Um, I'm going to be in response to our our members who are here for the anti, uh, let me just make sure I got it right here. The Oversight Committee addressing the hateful bias, anti-black language and action board report. So I want to move that here to be respectful of those who are here uh in the time. It's just a little one here. So we can start that now.
All right. Good evening. I am honored to be introducing this evening our Oversight Committee to you. Before I do so, I just want to give you a little background on how our members were selected. Uh, as you could see, the official title is the, our Oversight Committee addressing hateful bias and anti-black language and actions that are occurring uh within our school district. Uh, so let's see if this slide. Oh, it is working. Okay, got it. All right. Just as a reminder, Superintendent Maldonado has pointed out how we focus on the ABCs in our school district and this work specifically focusing on belonging and community and collaboration. Uh, it is crucial to make sure that our our students are feeling that in order to achieve their academics, arts and athletics, and to achieve their dreams, actually. So uh, with the Oversight Committee, we had a panel uh that reviewed all the applications. So we received over sixty-one applications. So um and we received of most or the majority of the applications actually came from parents. Uh, and then I would say the, then we had applet, applications from teachers. We had a couple of applications from classified staff, uh, as well as we had one from a student. We, what we did with the these, the applications, we gathered them up. Uh, we, we went through and selected, uh, actually recruited, I should say, a selection panel, which consisted, as you could see, of the members there. So student educator, classified staff and so on. And then what we did with them specifically is that we actually sent them uh, uh, two specific things. One in particular was a rubric that we used in order to measure the the questions that were answered. So we had, um, and I will be showing you the rubric. So we had four specific questions on the application. So we used uh the rubric for that. They were using that themselves. So it wasn't like they came in and we compiled all the scores. We, we suggested that we, they would use it as a tool. And then once we came together, we discussed the top applicants. So we asked them to actually submit their top applicants in the order of, um, I believe it was like five, uh, five or six. And then from that point, we had a conversation around the five or six applicants that were selected. And then we were able to narrow it down to two parents from elementary schools, two parents from secondary schools, and uh three uh staff members. So based upon, again, we, what we did was we compiled not only parents, not only staff. We also had community members, but that was a small amount and then a student. I I realize I didn't say community members. So, but we did. We had uh just a small group of community members. But out of all of that, what came were the 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 top selection from the individuals here and then what was discussed and then finally um solidified after our meeting. And uh, Ms. Pilhofer and I were both facilitating process. So we were not involved with the voting or anything like that. Uh, let's see. Uh, I don't need this. So the members of the Oversight Committee, what we were looking for, you could read through this. Some of these items are specifically spelled out in the rubric as, you know, which is based upon the questions. But some of the things that we also wanted to make sure that um they came with a, like really a collaborative spirit and the the ability to do problem solving and also to speak what we would say, what they saw and what they were experiencing as the truth within the schools and with as a parent, as a staff member to to come and give us the feedback on what was working and what's not working as we roll out our plan of implementation. So that's what's really crucial and that's what we were looking for. Um, and again, another one is conflict resolution, knowing that we need to move forward as a team. Here's the rubric that we had developed uh in terms, basically, uh, this gives you the overarching uh full fifteen points. I'm just giving you the top rating there of each section. But the one thing that we also looked into as well was as we reviewed the applications, just on the clear and effectiveness of their, the way they articulated uh their application. And with that being said, I am very excited to introduce our committee members. So uh I'll just call each one up and they'll come up and introduce themselves and just give you just really what they would like to achieve this year as being part of the committee. So Michelle, if you want to come up, please.
Since I am shorter than our last speaker, I'm gonna move this. Um, hi, everybody. Um, so my name is Dr. Michelle Petty-Gruy. I am a professor at UCC in a Barbara. Um, so as much as I am also a parent and he's like the reason why I do this. Um, this is also like my work, you know, I get like paid to go places and teach them about like race and how to analyze their curriculum and stuff. So I bring both like an actual skill set around this work and you know, a heartfelt commitment to doing this. Um, I grew up in Long Po, so I'm I'm familiar with the area. And you know, there were things that happened there too. It's not a problem unique to Santa Barbara. Um, and unfortunately, like not enough has changed from when I was his age um, to things now. And so I'm just really committed to A, um, making sure that there is demonstrable changes and just like another committee that talks and then sends a report, but nothing actually happens. Um, I've sat on plenty of those as a professor. Um, but also just that there's you know, some sort of mechanism for really being able to like have people in the public feel like they really can communicate with the board. Because even though you are all lovely humans here um, willing to do this work, there's often a disconnect between the accessibility uh, piece between like, how do we actually communicate? Um, and so I really do like take this position with some, you know, respect and responsibility that we're doing work that doesn't just influence like my personal opinions about my child trajectory, but the community's um, ability to have community and collaboration and belonging um, and also be a voice for people that don't get to to be in these sorts of meetings. So yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Brianna Strato. I am a parent at Roosevelt. My daughter is in fifth grade and my son is in second grade. And I um volunteered uh, after being on the prior committee um, that had been open to everybody and the work that that was going on with that, I wanted to go ahead and continue with that with uh, and for this year, my focus will be on making it a safe environment, um, both in the classroom and just overall on campus. Not only for the students, but also for their families and also the staff. Along with that, also making sure that staff that may not feel as comfortable or knowing how to handle certain situations, that they have those tools and resources since that has been an issue in the past. Um, a little bit about my background, uh, both of my children are in um, special education and so through the years I have learned about advocacy through that. Um, they are also mixed race and so um, we have that perspective and uh, yeah, and I um, have also just helped other friends um, in advocating at their IEPs. So some of them are familiar with me. Uh, but I I'm here to use my voice, use the privilege that I have as a white woman in order to help elevate those other voices that are so important and needs to be done.
Since you guys are in order, I'll just say Teresa, then.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Martinez. My son attends Santa Barbara High School. He's a freshman and I can't believe it. Um, I echo the sentiments of um, the other committee members and what I hope to achieve as a part of this Oversight Committee really is to make sure that our schools are safe for our black children. Um, that's work that we started on the combating anti-blackness task force, which I was a part of last year. I think it was a couple of years. Um, and really to work with the district and families and community partners to make institutional change in the Santa Barbara Unified Schools. What we learned from the survey that was conducted um, last year is that racism in Santa Barbara Unified is not new. Um, it's definitely gone on for way too long and has caused a lot of pain in our community. And so I hope that we can start healing as um, a community, as a school district. And so I am here on behalf of my family and the family of other black students to represent them and to um, give them a voice. My uh, background, I am a attorney in the community. I grew up in Santa Barbara Unified Schools. Um, and I attribute my going to college to a Chicano Studies um, teacher that I had in high school. And so, and that was William Gonzalez. And so without him, um, I probably never would have went to college. And so having curriculum uh, that is reflective of students' diversity and ethnicity and backgrounds is so powerful. And so uh, I hope to to see more of that and and be a part of a greater change. Thank you.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Kimba Lawrence and by day I am the Director of Community Services at uh, Communicify. I am also a member of Gateway Education Services on Black uh, Parents of Black Students Advocacy Group. Um, I am also on the Board of the Santa Barbara NAACP, Board of uh, NAACP for Santa Barbara. Um, and uh, one of the things that I was on was the the um, the combating anti-blackness when it started. And one of the things I hope to achieve is to see this work continued and to see it as a avenue for some of the healing that has not occurred over the years in the district. Um, echoing what has been said by my um, committee uh, partners and members. There was a lot that was unaddressed and there's a lot of pain that is still evident. So this is an amazing opportunity. This is very um, um, exciting work that can be done, that can also lay the groundwork for other healing in other areas within our community. So some of the other things I'd like to see is some strategic and deliberate and measurable actions to come out of this um, to create a safe environment for not just our students, but also for our black staff. Um, I also like to see some supportive services to be laid out in the district so that we can support our our faculty and staff that are there. So they can have the tools to be able to address some of the issues that have gone unaddressed for so many years. And we want to empower them because they're a part of the process. Um, I would also like to see some of the partners that we will be recruiting to uh, complete this work. I would like to also make sure that they have some of the competency and the relevancy to actually do the work and to uh, be able to prove that they've had some success in the area of the of of combating anti-blackness, of creating curriculum, of uh, creating supportive services and systems. So overall, I'm an internal optimist and I do believe all these things can be achieved, whether it be in my lifetime or my child's lifetime, somewhere it has to start. And I believe this is where we are starting. This will not be where we end. It will be a continuing process and I am very proud to be a part of this process and um, hope to be laying the groundwork for the future of this district. Thank you.
All right, let's go. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Raquel Frosto. I am a fourth grade teacher at Washington Elementary. Um, this work has been my lifelong work. I'm an anti-racist educator. Also, I've gone through Santa Barbara Unified as a child myself. My daughter's a former graduate. Um, so I'd like to just echo a lot of what Spence said. I think as an educator, I think it's real important for us to have the tools to not be afraid to address it um, immediately, any anti-racist or any racism within the classroom, but also to um, incorporate culture all the time. And um, I'm just, I'm doing the work every day and I'm I'm gonna be excited to work with these folks and continue, continue. Thank you.
Uh, so to make sure of my voice. Um, I'm Karim Battle. Um, I've taught twenty-six years in the school district. Um, I have a, my oldest son finished his first year UCLA. He's a Don. Uh, my youngest son's a junior at Santa Barbara High. He's also a Don. Um, I really want to focus on the language of young people. A couple of years back, um, I felt it was just my responsibility to talk to young people about the way they speak, especially about black students in our district. Um, I've developed curriculum to talk to any kid that uses the N word on campus. I've met with probably fifty-five kids in the last eighteen months. Um, it's, I feel it's my my duty and my work, my duty and my role to kind of educate young people and the pain and suffering that is causing. Um, especially with my sons in these schools and experiencing this. I'm from Long Po, but I'm a de facto Santa Barbaraan and I I just feel like it's our duty to help these young people. And I want to like minds, which I see around me, obviously, sitting on this committee that could help me to promote changing the way people speak and act to black children in the school, especially because I have one too. The one that's in the schools right now and I educate these kids all the time. So it's my responsibility to help these young people. Thank you.
Hi, uh, good evening. Um, Art Nelson Concordia. I get to uh, support, uh, coordinate and help develop our ethnic studies uh, program for Santa Barbara Unified. And um, I'm I'm a father of four brown boys. I'm not from the eight oh five or Santa Barbara. But it has been a real pleasure getting to know the community and getting to work with our teachers who I believe I'm really representing and bringing into this this work because it, from everything that the uh, my fellow committee members have said, uh, there is an urgency. And I think there is also a wealth of knowledge and experience that uh, collectively we're we're uh, bringing and can tap into um, to address it. And and our teachers are in front of all of our young people. And I think helping uh, and helping uh, to support them in how we address directly r- racism um, and combat anti-black blackness. Like that is at the heart of ethnic studies. Um, and I I too, I don't, I don't know if I'm an optimist, but eternally hopeful. Um, and excited for the the work ahead. It's it's huge responsibility and um, I'm honored to to get to be a part of it. So tha- thank you for for your support uh, uh, as our leaders in our, in in the district.
So the, first off, as you could see, we have amazing committee. Uh, and by the way, the, it was, we had wonderful applications. So it was uh, it was hard work on the selection panel. So but uh, as you can see, we we have wonderful committee members doing this work for us. Um, some of the responsibilities that they'll be taking on in particular. I mean, if you want to show the slide deck, but I can just also share that with you directly, which is um, well, that wouldn't be it, but that would be the responsibilities to show to, show up to the meeting. Um, number one is specifically, what we will do with them is like, give them the information on the work that we're doing in the school district as we roll out this implementation plan. And that's, as you know, was based upon the work that came from last year and I presented to you this summer what we were doing, including the development of the Oversight Committee. So we will be sharing with them the the latest updates regarding the work that we're doing, including getting their feedback about what's working, what's not working, where we are in the this, the um, the work at the moment. The other thing is using data, whether it's implementation data, so measuring how we're rolling this out. For example, for providing training to uh, staff. So showing how many staff members are receiving training, uh, student outcome data. So it's making sure that this is actually making an impact on our kids. So, and using that to make decisions. Also uh, using their background and their ideas and having them bring it in to help guide us. So we're not just stuck on a, which is just not being on a railroad track going straight down. So if we need to adjust and do things to be more effective, more impactful, we can do that. The last thing is, I would say is that just making sure and keeping us accountable for the work. Seriously, that's what we need to keep track of what we're doing and we need to make sure we stay on track because I know that hmm, that you have mentioned that you wanted to make sure that it doesn't fade out. It doesn't fizzle out. So that's why the work that they come in, what they provide helps us to stay on track. As you could see, it's been way too long for this to be addressed and we have the opportunity now to just do that. Um, one thing I remind, I want to remind all of us is that this work, what we are doing right now, we're focusing on some immediate things that we need to do. I brought up the three Rs. Recognize, responding and reporting. So things that we need to do immediately as well as along with what we saw with the report from the combating anti-blackness work group as well as insight, as well as we even heard from our community members from NAACP is that we need to make sure that this is also a long process. We want to start seeing you know, these changes in multiple ways and educating students. What else do we want to see? We want to see staff members that that represent our kids, like all of these variations to this. So um, with that being said, we have much work ahead. Next slide. As you can see on the left, these are our meetings uh, that are scheduled for the Oversight Committee. They're an hour and a half. Uh, we did, when we sent an email to those who did uh, who were not selected, we did offer up an opportunity to be part of uh, like and they can provide advisory. And so we'll be working with the Oversight Committee on how we want to do that. But we also want to, we want to keep the lines of communication open. That's crucial as we do this work. The second one is that you'll see with the board reports, these are the specific reports that we'll be giving to you on the work that we're providing uh, or the, sorry, not the work that we're providing, but the work that we are doing with addressing the hateful bias to anti-black language and actions in the district. So um, I want to say thank you to, to all of you for coming out tonight and really speaking your mind and your thought and your hearts. And um, and let's go to work. All right. So board members, questions?
Um, thank you for the report. Any speakers regarding this?
No speakers.
No speakers.
Okay, board members comments? We'll try to make them kind of quick. We know we still, we want to be my flow time. So. Mr. Scapito.
Thank you, all of you for stepping up for this really important Oversight Committee. Um, I know we had a lot of applicants, but it is clear that we have a great group of folks, very qualified, very knowledgeable. Um, and I'm excited for the work that's gonna start this year and definitely carry on into the future. Mr. Vance, I had some questions for you. Um, who's going to staff this committee? So do we have a, someone from the cabinet that is going to be designated to attend these meetings, facilitate these meetings? Um, and be the contact person for the committee members?
I'm gonna ask that person to raise their hand. Yeah. So uh, actually, it's, I'm not doing this by myself. This is not a solo flight. So as my co-pilot, I'll have Ms. Anna Pilhofer, who's very passionate about this and amazing at supporting our work together. So.
Fantastic. Um, and then uh, so I'm looking at some of these duties and uh, in looking at these duties and the roles and responsibilities and then assessing that there are five meetings for the academic year. Um, it's a lot to get done in five meetings and the first meeting is tomorrow. And I imagine much of that is logistics. So you're really talking about four meetings. Um, if the committee uh, decides that they need more meetings than just those five, is that something that we can accommodate?
Well, uh, yes, I, to be respectful of their time because one of the things that I do know is that they are, I've heard indirectly how their time is very much spent doing the work that they're doing um, in the community and the schools. However, what you're asking is open in terms of a discussion with the Oversight Committee and they can determine if they, if we need a meet. Yes. So um, so that's a possibility. The one thing I would say is tomorrow's meeting is just not a throwaway meeting. Because what we want to do is provide them, we're gonna show them the agenda that we'll be having at every me, at every meeting, right? Um, so we will be giving them the update, but then we're also gonna start diving into the work that we've been doing and so on. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I noticed, and I don't know if this was purposeful, but um, typically with each of the Oversight Committee meetings, then soon thereafter is a board report. So I noticed, and I don't know if this was purposeful, but typically with each of the Oversight Committee meetings, then soon thereafter is a board report. Will there be a report from committee members or coming from the committee to the board at the subsequent? Board reports?
Yeah, so the meetings were scheduled strategically so we can start the process of the meeting. Meeting with the Oversight Committee and then at certain points actually have them that can also provide a report. One of the things that that we were going to introduce the idea tomorrow, but not go through the process of this. But is actually like with any committee or Oversight Committee, select. A chairperson for that, right? But tomorrow, we don't want to do that because we know the time is of essence. So we want to start the process of actually introducing each other and going through it. And then perhaps the next meeting, taking the time to do the selection process of a chairperson. And then the chairperson could provide the the report. So.
Okay. So I want to share. A similar, it was going to concern that Dr. I'm sorry if I get your last name wrong, Pedigree. Had mentioned about, I've also been a part of other committees where it has been very performative and it's been. Sometimes used as. I'll I'll say this like cover for an agency or a group or an organization. And I I really want to make sure that we're providing agency for this Oversight Group so that they can. Tell you what information that they need, that they can tell you what it is that they want. Or have some input into what this Oversight Committee, what these meetings look like and what the outcomes are, right? And what the reports are to the board because I don't want. There this to be performative and I don't get the sense that it's going to be. And I and I have never gotten that sense, but it's a concern that I always have whenever. Agencies, organizations create these Oversight Committees that sometimes they're limited in their scope and their authority and their. Agency in the process and in every way possible. And that's part of oversight, right? It's not always going to be nice. It's not always going to feel good and we're not always going to get the best information that makes us feel good. But it's going to be the right information that's going to allow us to make the change necessary to get some of the outcomes that we need. So some some of that is hard and I'm going to encourage us to really embrace that as a school district and as a board. To hear the hard information. And sometimes that means we don't get to control every every detail. And so we got to give up some of that control to oversight and that's how you have effective transparent oversight. So I wanted to speak that out loud. I know it's already on your mind. I know it's already a consideration for us. But it's important for us to keep that front of mind from the jump because the last thing I want is for these folks to get cynical. And feel like the work that they're putting in is not making the tangible results that we all want and the school district needs. So. Again, I am so appreciative of all the time that you're going to put into this and in any way that we can support you, please let us know. You are in good hands. I know that much. And so we're hoping to set you up for success. And so just thank you so much. Thank you.
There's no comments from the board members? Ms. Munoz, name is Alvarez.
Yes, just in terms of when we when this first started, you know, I I know I was attending the meetings then. And the conversations and and such. I want to express my appreciation for everyone who is on the Oversight Committee. I'm sure the conversations are going to get, you know. Down to. Are going to be real and stuff and address what we need to do, what we've been. What's needed to be done since, you know, way back. And and stuff and just, you know, very appreciative any way that I could support any and all of you. I really appreciate the time that you're going to be devoting to this. It's going to make us a better district. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Thank you, Ms. Phil Hopper for your work. And in your presentations, I heard a lot of commitment. I heard action oriented. I heard. Collaboration, belonging, safe institutional change. I heard optimism. I heard support. And all of that shows where we are, who we are. And the courage that it takes to be here. The courage to be comfortable with being uncomfortable, right? And like John Lewis said, when you see something that's not right, that's not fair, that's not just, you have to do something. And I believe that's where we're at. And thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing more updates and see how we can support. Thank you.
Mr. Benny?
Just to echo, just to echo the word words of thanks of my colleagues at the board here for your time and. Energy, all of you that are involved in this. I'm looking forward to hearing from you as this moves along. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I again, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues here and I want to belabor that, but I I just have to say that. My heart that's beating tonight is beating differently from when we very first started this off when the incident first came to our attention and the level of hurt. That was there. So it's beating for a different reason and it's beating because of this group that stayed the course when you first started that and kept the belief. With that we were going to keep my word as a board that we were going to see this through to be able to change the environment and experience of our black students and our families. So thank you for that, staying the course and believing. In us that we were going to stay here and we're going to add, make sure that you have agency for what we need to do because we know that's going to be the change. And then to also understand the purpose of why we're doing this work. Because we will have people on the side that will, you know, want to distract you from that. I call them deer on the side of the road. But we need to stay focused so that we don't crash and burn and get, you know, get upset about it and want to turn away from this work. But we know that the change that we are seeking for our black students and family, that experience will change us as a district. And so just your willingness to be here to share your experience with us and to share your time for sure. And also to your little one, little one, I want to make sure we get a shout out to the little ones that be patient in adult processes. So. And I I sincerely believe that this is going to change our environment, that this is going to be something that who we are. So when you say Santa Barbara Unified, it's not just combating combating anti-blackness, it is making it safe. For all students to attend this. And if this where we start to make it for all and spread out, this is where we start. So again, thank you so much for that and that my heart is really beating much lighter than it was on that. And I know it needed to beat to that level. In order to get us moving forward. And so I just, I just want to say thank you as well for that and that we're going to be here. Through the change that in the change has to last past this board, has this the changes, it had always has to stay here. And so anyone coming to work here, go to school here and as a parent experiences, they already know if you say Santa Barbara Unified, when we truly say. Every child, every chance, every day, that means exactly what it is and includes all of being inclusive and being a safe. Environment so that you can learn and have a different experience than those of our parents and those of ourselves today. So again, thank you so much and I my heart is filled. You know, still got a little room because I know we got work to do. So and but I want it to be overflowing. In that eternity. So I appreciate so much for your time and effort and also. Mr. Vance and Ms. Pilhopper, knowing the work that you're going to do and also to our board colleagues, we got to stand the course when the heat gets hard.
Just one thing, I just want to make sure I'm not remiss with this. I because this is being viewed online. I just want to say thank you to those who submitted an application.
Yes.
And I I wasn't sure if I said that or not, but I think it's crucial to say thank you to those who did. Throw threw their hat in the ring and and like I said, it was just, it was hard work to to select. So again, thank you to our community.
And thank you for including them also that they have the opportunity to participate in as well, even though they weren't part of the selection part. So again, thank you so much. Any final comments, Ms. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Like to just take a quick pause.
Sure, we can take a pause. Okay, so I'm going to call us back to order. Thank you for that break. Thank you, staff and cabinet for being patient as we moved our. Gender around a bit a bit. So we're going to go back to G three. Approval of Explorer Ecology Contract for twenty twenty-three school year, twenty-three twenty-four school year education.
Good evening, Board President Sims Moulton, Board Members and Superintendent Maldonado. I am here asking for you to approve the Explorer Ecology. Opportunity for La Colina Junior High School. They have a very large garden program, so they have a. Large amount of their students and teachers participating in that program. It's an integral part of the school. And we are asking that you would go ahead and and approve this contract for them to continue with their garden.
Any requests to speak on this?
No speakers.
Okay, any questions or comments, board members? Hearing none may have a motion.
I move that we approve the Explorer Ecology Contract as presented.
I second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you, Dr. Sheffield, Jeff Fields. I think you're our next one as well, right? Okay, so approval of social emotional skill development for twenty-three twenty-four school year for Dos Pueblos High School.
And this is being presented for the Dos Pueblos High School Innovate Program. They have a life coach that participates with their students in their program. And we are asking to have Mr. Torres continue working with that program. To support the variety of programs of social emotional needs of the students.
Thank you.
We have a speaker. Is she online? Ms. Crawford, please begin. Roseanne Crawford.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Lovely. These are my questions. Good evening. Thank you. Maybe I I've been traveling a lot this summer. Was John Torres' background and credentials discussed prior to this? Draft of a contract you brought up because there's nothing, there's no introduction to this. There's lots of intentions, but there's no material set forth or attachments to review. Particularly one of the work services to be provided for trusted adult relationships with students on campus. It's a very tangible statement. And how would that be qualified or monitored? So that's a concern particularly with molestation that have happened and so forth. The term is a concern because it says this term is an agreement from August twenty-third through June thirtieth twenty-four. Well. It's what is it the twelfth of September? So that's not right either. And the other thing in question is, is this putting the cart before the horse in that. There is no developed material. It says here that at least two weeks prior to distribution. The superintendent or designate will be able to approve or disapprove. And so that's like cutting it really short. If there isn't already something to evaluate, are parents going to be able to look at this? If you're using LCAP funds and working with students that maybe have different needs. I think it needs to be looked at very, very carefully. So those are my concerns and I urge you to put this on hold tonight. Until there's something more concrete. Because this looks like it was just thrown together in the final hour of, oh, here we go. Let's just do this. And I'm sorry, when you're using LCAP funding and working with kids that I shouldn't say kids, pardon me, students that you're trying to encourage. I I think this needs to be handled in a more delicate, professional, straightforward way. So that's just the way I. There were only two attachments. So if there's others that have gone forth before, my apologies, but just coming into this tonight, it's like. Who, what is this person and was it put out to bed, etc.? I won't be redundant, but thank you very much for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Board members, comments or questions? Ms. Munoz?
Yeah, I just had a question. I wondered if this is the first time that this is. That Mr. Torres is providing this service to Dos Pueblos?
This is not the first time. This is a a new contract for the new school year. He was in place last year also.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? May have a motion approval?
I'd like to make a motion. Let's see. To for the contract with Gerald Torres for Life Coach Services at DP High School.
Second.
Been motioned second. Please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. So next move to G five, approval of state and civil contract for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three twenty-four school year for La Cumbre Junior High.
And we are bringing this forward for La Cumbre Junior High School. They have been working with the Safe and Civil Schools Program. This is a continuation of their contract, putting in place a variety of positive behavior intervention and supports for the site. They've worked with the teachers and the classified staff to really identify services and programs that they can put in place. To improve student connectedness, number one, to the school site as well as improve student behavior. Addressing the student behaviors in a variety of different ways instead of being punitive. Their their thoughts is to put some systems in place that's more positive and and have an effect on the school climate and culture. We've seen an amazing beginning of the new school year. They've been working very hard and this is a continuation of the program.
Thank you. Any requests to speak?
No public speakers.
Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you for the information. I do have one request in the future when we have information such as this for renewal. If you could please include the progress. What what has happened as a result of engaging these services? How has it improved? What work has to be done because personally, it's very helpful to me to say, okay, this we need to, we need to continue investing in this. Or I asked the question, well, what's the return on investment? I did ask the question and I did receive an answer. And one of the points that was made was that suspensions have decreased since this has been implemented. So I think that's very important to include in the board packet as to the why. We're doing this and how it benefits ultimately the students. Thank you.
Hey. Additional comments or questions? May have a motion.
I I move to approve the State and Civil Contract for twenty-three twenty-four school year for La Cumbre Junior High School.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Been motioned second. Please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I do appreciate the bundle together, whether you have you guys come in and out. So I just want to appreciate that efficiency in the process. So yeah, so Ms. Peak is coming up for approval of annual report of teacher assignments for resolution. Speak.
There we go. Good evening, Board President Wendy Sims Moulton, Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. The item you have in front of you is the approval of the annual report of teacher assignments and resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash eleven. The Commission on Teacher Credentiality allows for teachers to teach outside their main credential if they meet the requirements of various ed codes. And Title V Regulations. After a thorough review of the secondary schools' master schedules, it's been determined that various teachers can teach under the education code as described on the document before you. This allows for schools to have some flexibility to assign their certificated staff. These educator assignment options can be used when a district's unable to assign a certificated employee with the appropriate credential. These options, known as local assignment options, allow flexibility at the local level and are used solely at the discretion of the district. For the local assignment option to be used, the teacher is required to have a full teaching credential. The teacher needs to give their consent for the assignment and the options pertaining to teachers for gen ed assignments only. So in other words, special programs like special ed career technology or English learner assignments can't be used under the assignment options. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Assuming no requests to speak from the public.
No speakers.
Any comments or questions, board members? Hearing no questions, may have a motion.
I move to approve the annual report of teacher assignments and resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four eleven as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, been motioned second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Peak. Excellent. You're still there. You, right? I'm just, I really tested myself. Approval of provisional internship permits on G seven. You, right, I'm just, I really tested myself. Approval of provisional internship permits on G seven.
So, good evening again, Board President Sims Mountain, Board of Education, Dr. Maldonado. The next item we have in front of you is the request to approve provisional internship permits. So they, they may be submitted to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. The, it's known as a PIP. So the PIP is a permit issued by the Commission which allows an employing agency to fill an immediate staffing need by hiring an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competence requirement to enter into an intern program. On this document before you, you'll find four individuals who are requesting the CTC to review and approve their PIP applications.
Okay, don't see any requests to speak. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the PIPs as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. Okay, number eight, approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, hello again. I feel like this happens every time I present. So the item you have in front of you is the annual declaration of need for fully qualified educators in resolution twenty-three, twenty-four ten. This item was previously brought before the board and approved in June. At the time that we presented it in June, the CTC then revised their form right about the same time as we submitted ours. So our form was returned and thus we have to resubmit to the CTC. As a reminder, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing requires that we as a district file an annual declaration of need for fully qualified educators if we anticipate employing teachers who have a base credential or multiple subject but are not fully qualified in other areas. In other words, these teachers may be new to California and are in need of an emergency cloud or be clouded by legal authorization. Currently, California teaching credential programs embed the cloud information in their programs. Out of state programs unfortunately do not typically have a comparable authorization unless there's a need for the emergency cloud. The Declaration of Need, otherwise known as a DON, we use lots of short little words around here for these credential things. Also provides the district the ability to apply for general education and special education limited assignment permits, LAPS for general ed and CLAPS for special ed. LAPS and CLAPS can only be issued to applicants holding a valid California teaching credential based on a back, a backglow degree and a professional preparation program including student teaching. So an example of this might be a science teacher who is teaching a section of math but doesn't have the math credential yet. The LAP allows for that teacher to teach the section of math for the year. If they're to continue teaching math, they need to pursue the credential. The DON also allows for the district to file for emergency transitional kindergarten permits, ETK, for TK teachers if they don't meet the TK requirements. Although the TK permit is not specifically spelled out on the, on the DON. So with that, I will do my best to answer any questions you may have regarding the Declaration of Need.
Okay. Okay, any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Declaration of Need as presented. Thank you, Ms. Peak.
Okay, have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes. We'll move to G nine. Prove a contract amendment number one to Robert Half customer agreement for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board Member Superintendent Maldonado. I bring before you a contract for Robert Half. This was part of the bundle that I presented to the board on August eighth. We are, were able to get the amendment signed. That amendment references back to a contract that you approved in April. That was a contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so this is bringing forward the Robert Half. As was mentioned earlier in the evening, this is a contract for temporary employees in the clerical space where we have a regular employee that's not able to be at work for a longer period of time and we, we typically will send a temporary employee to the, to the site or department in order to fill that need. Happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
No requests to speak? Just want to honor that in case someone said they did. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move to approve amendment number one to the Robert Half Customer Agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I second.
Motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Prove a vision to certificate, okay, Miss, doing a switcheroo on us over there, okay?
Keep you on your toes.
You know, that's a serial call switcheroo.
I didn't know that. So with that, good evening again. So the next human resources item you have in front of you is the revised certificated salary schedule twenty-three, twenty-four exhibit B three. When exhibit B three was approved at the June twenty-seventh meeting, an earlier version of the exhibit was submitted and it was missing the hourly rate for school psychologists and speech language pathologists. This is the corrected version, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No requests to speak, board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the revised certificated salary schedule exhibit B three.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. We'll move to G eleven, approve of human resources recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peak.
All right, thank you, Board President Sims Moten. Board members, this item represents the transactions that have happened in human resources since we've last met. Want to take an opportunity to just run through a couple of highlights. First of all, I want to recognize, I know we recognized Sonia tonight. She was introduced to you and said a few words. We also have found a dean of student engagement for La Colina, so that is Tobias Emery. And he will probably begin early October. I want to also recognize Jorge Folco and Fred Madrigal who are both filling a temporary need. Will fill a temporary need, one at La Colina in the dean space and then the other Jorge at Santa Barbara Junior High. So I want to thank them publicly for their continued service to the district when we need them. And then I also want to recognize Albert Martinez who's hired in, it's really a promotion into a classified management position where he is serving to oversee and coordinate the peak programming. And so he's on this list. And then if you move down to classified promotions, you'll see we have three on here. Congratulations to Manuel Gomez, Edar Herrera Busteros and Daniel Ranhal. And they are all in the ETS Department. And then also wanted to recognize Carol Hernandez who is in payroll as an assistant and qualifies for the language services premium. With that, I will turn the list over to the board for your consideration and any questions you might have.
Seeing no requests to speak from the public, board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel action items as presented and very happy to see the internal promotions. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving now to G twelve, approval of additional positions and cost increase within the Maxim Healthcare Services, student, family and services and special education.
Good evening. I am bringing you a recommendation to extend our contract with Maxim Healthcare Services that will allow us to hire an additional school psychologist and a speech therapist. At the time that I wrote the board background, we had two vacant school psychologist positions and one speech therapist. An update for you today is we do have an offer out to a school psychologist if accepted. Along with this contract extension, we would be fully staffed with our school psychologists as well as our speech therapists. What I did on the board background was list the salary and benefits that were budgeted for those positions and certificated salaries. And then what the cost would be to contract with Maxim for those individuals. And you could see there's a net increase in using a contractor for these roles, which there always will be. But we are at that point during the year, we need to fill these seats and so we're happy to have partners who can help us with that work. Board President Sims Moten, you referenced earlier kind of how does this play out with our budget? So we would not be expending all of our certificated salary benefits in these areas, but it would show up in contracted services instead. And we do have the budget for this year to account for that.
Great, thank you.
With that, I welcome any questions or comments from the board.
Seeing no requests from the public to speak, board members, questions or comments? May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the revised contract with Maxim for additional services as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Right, thank you. Moving to G thirteen, Department of School Attendants Review Board Panel Members. Citizen's on her way.
Me, Board and Superintendent. We are moving within our district to host our own internal SARB for the district as the largest district in the county serving TK through twelve. It is appropriate for us to be able to meet the need of not one-on-one meetings, but a robust, resource-rich group SARB and then also offering one-on-one SARBs where necessary. So what I am bringing in for you today is just a regular operational task of appointing the SARB panel. And these are the list of the names. These are internal staff members who are doing the work every day. And we will continue to partner with the District Attorney's Office as a partner. But we will be leading these efforts as we talk to our families about why they are not attending school on time all day, every day. And making sure that we've exhausted all of our resources so that we can support the actual need and not just have routine meetings.
Seeing no requests to speak from the public. Board members, any comments or questions?
Thank you for doing this work and my, and you mentioned this, so I'm sure you're already doing this. It's that not, it's not solely focused on punitive and rules and regulations, but that we include the human component. There's many reasons where kids, students are absent that aren't necessarily because of defiance, but many times it's circumstances beyond their control. So I am asking and I am very hopeful that this committee will take that into consideration.
Absolutely. We are focused on building relationships and linking to services and not criminalizing normal adolescent behavior and or poverty or any other struggles that are barriers to school attendance. So it's why we're taking this work back and owning it as a district so the experience our families have is still supportive and still holding conversations around accountability to school attendance.
Thank you, and I would love to hear back from you eventually how this is going.
Absolutely. We'll be reporting this in our implementation data so that we'll have some outcome data for you all as well.
Perfect, thank you.
I'd, I'd also like to share my enthusiasm about having this brought in-house. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
You know, additional comments or questions, board may have a motion, please.
I move to approve the appointment of the School Attendants Review Panel Members for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, we're going to move to fourteen, G fourteen, second reading and approval of board policy administrative regulation in the district attendance.
Yes, so I remain here. As you know, we brought the board policy and administrative regulation for a first reading. This is our second reading. We did reach out and partner with our legal counsel on this matter who's here tonight, Austin Payne. We'll have a conversation, to have a conversation about where the board wants to go next. And I will yield for any questions you may have for him on the legal side. There was a minor change, didn't change the substantive nature of the AR, the administrative regulation, which is how we do work. But it was wordsmithing, a great addition to the AR, and then I'll yield now to any questions you may have for our legal counsel.
Hi, Board. Good to see you tonight. I, I can say a couple of quick things, I guess. I, I looked at this from the context of the county board because I've worked with them a lot on these appeals. So there's a few things I was looking for, obviously that it complies with the law, which it does. That it's going to stand up to scrutiny and that it gives you guys some guidance and some guardrails and making these decisions, making sure that they're sound decisions. And kind of the side effect of that is that it also gives the public a little bit of an expectation of what, you know, whether or not they can get one of these to actually pass or if they're going to make an appeal, what they can expect. So I think this accomplishes all of that. I think staff did a really good job drafting this in a way that, that puts those guardrails up and, and lets you know exactly what to expect with these appeals. So if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No requests to speak, so, so I'll speak, go to the board. Any questions, come to Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you. I, I do have some clarifications. The old board policy, the one that's being, the red line. It was very specific talking about what is not approved or may not be approved. And that's been removed from the policy and now it's in the AR. So the AR is the how, it's the administrative regulation, not the policy itself. Wouldn't that open up for more appeals and more challenges since it's not a board policy?
Yeah, I think, I think I understand the question because regulations can be changed easier generally by a superintendent, for instance. I don't think so. That, that was done to follow the CSBA templates, I believe, and you may know better than I. So I, I don't see it as an issue as long as you're following the regulations that the district has, has set. And that those are being reviewed and given to you now, then it shouldn't be an issue at the county level. I, I don't think it'll result in more appeals.
When I was reading the proposed policy, I, I, I'm just not comfortable with it yet. It just seems so broad, so open to interpretation. I was more comfortable with the old, well, the current because it hasn't changed yet. Because it specifically said accept in this circumstances. I'm also, I would love to discuss it with my board colleagues, especially number five. Where it talks about to allow the students to remain in the district until they have completed the final grade offered in their current grade span. So if a student is approved in TK, that could mean eight years. What incentive is there for the family to move to the SB Unified Attendance Area? That's a question for, for, for admin.
You, can you say more?
Yes.
What you mean by an incentive for the family to?
So if my child, if I live out of town, for example, and I already have a transfer approved for my TK and that child is approved until sixth grade, I don't need to make any efforts to move in the attendance area so my child can come to an SB Unified school. Am I understanding that correctly? Is that what this says?
I think that the transfer implies that you can stay here for that, that transfer is your enrollment, right, once we approve it until the sixth grade. And I, I think giving a transfer implies that they're not going to move to our district, so I don't think we issue those with an expectation of that. Did you want to add to that, Ms. Madison?
And remember, the initial approval is already limited by the exceptions we've put in the plan, right? So even if they were living in our district, they moved out of our, our district and we approved it, it's still based on the limitation that they had to meet those other qualifications. We do have many families that have lived within our unified, San Barbara Unified and moved out to because they can't afford to live here and we then approve it because we're allowing them to stay through the end. Right? So those are some scenarios that have happened.
I totally understand allowing to finish the current school year. Allowing to stay three to four years, it's a significant financial impact. And if we're talking about small class sizes, we're talking about a deep dive into our budget to see how we can better support our staff, number one, and all their expenses. I think this is a point that needs to be discussed. I'm a hundred percent behind students of employees that I'm a hundred percent behind that. I don't want to change that. I would love to have more discussion, maybe not tonight because it's late on number five. I, I just can't see how we can approve an eight-year commitment. I can see reviewing it on a yearly basis, but I don't, being a community-funded district, it's very, very important financially that we look at our enrollment and students in our attendance area.
So I just want to say part of our practices, they do reapply every year, even though that we have the exception for the end of the grade span. So every year they submit a transfer request and And no resident student can be displaced by an inter. So if it gets to a place that a resident student moves in, and that's ed code, that we have to look at our interns and they are, um, their transfers are rescinded so that residents' kids can attend.
So what happens if we reach the thirty contracted limit of students? Are we gonna say you're not a transfer, you need to leave? Or are we gonna open another, uh, are we gonna hire another teacher?
So if we get to the place where a school is at capacity and there's no more space in the program or grade level, we have run the query for who's on interns.
It will, they say you have to leave in October?
We have to give them notice, yes. They have to have due process now, so we do have to give them notice, yes.
And what happens in the interim? Do we enroll the other child?
Uh, yes, it's a swap-out space, actually. So the goal is to get them enrolled as soon as possible. Thankfully, we have not had to actually pull it. We did have to run the query to see how many interns we had. After our ten-day count, it balanced out, but obviously would be done in the most humane possible way and to get kids connected to their next district so that we can get our resident students in. It'd be difficult any way you look at it, because families also become part of the school community, so that's really hard. But it's unfortunately what the law is.
Yes, it's extremely difficult, I, I know. So if this, they have to apply on a yearly basis, why do we have number five?
I, I don't know if this helps, but number five allows them to just complete the final grade offered. It's not, you know, like they get admitted for, you know, TK and then they're there the rest of the six years.
So only for the grade that they're currently in?
Yeah.
Not a blank check for eight years?
If they're in like sixth grade and something happens and the family moves out or something like that. I'm, it says to allow the student to remain in the district until they've completed the final grade offered in their current grade span. So that's, that's the way I read.
Well, that actually implied, that's a whole different implication than what I read in that, that statement. And that's where the concern is. I think we're talking about an eight-year commitment, because the TK family moves out and they get to finish the final grade in that grade span, which means they get to stay from first grade to uh, to six. This seems like um, an exceptionally um, uh, permissive portion of, of this document. Um, particularly with the new language that has been added that says that the policy is established by legislature in the state of California is for pupils to attend the school district in which they reside. So the idea that moving out in TK and staying here, not in the district that they reside for seven years, is problematic for me on this one.
I, yes, and um, I read it the same way you read it. So if I'm reading it that way, I would, I would appeal. As a parent, I'm reading it, I come in, I get my transfer approved TK, I walk away thinking my child's gonna come here at SB Unified for eight years, because that's, that's what I took from that and I would be at the county appealing.
So can I, can I just add some history to that, to that, this number five? Of course, it's been based on where we were going in and out of community ADA. And so we were really trying to kinda give some type of comprehensive uh, guidelines to the parents to be, to not have them be penalized for us going in and out of ADA or, or community. So a lot, that was there. So if now, you know, uh, we are deeply in, if we're deeply in there in terms of those pieces, I think we were, this is maybe something that we need to discuss or change the language part, but just to give you the background of how this came and how we actually changed the policy to this level to even get to this point, because there was no uh, at the end of yours, you know, as long as you were here and you successfully were able to get your appeal, you stayed in. But these were, kinda gave us some guidelines, at least saying to the final grade that's, that's being offered. But if, if get, obviously, as we're talking about with regards to um, the community, you know, being a community A district, community A district here, then we might have to look at that language be different. But also wanna be mindful of our parents, why they might have to move out. That's the, the other thing. We were also trying to be mindful uh, of that. But I know times change, but I just wanna give you the history on why that's there, and even it changed from something else a bit more freely than to what it is now.
I, I, I would, I understand, and I think that one of the things that we start to look at number six on this is if somebody moves out for reasons that have those extraordinary circumstances, they can be covered in that respect without having to have a blanket coverage that because I moved down in kindergarten or TK that I can stay through the end of sixth grade. And then I, I would also ask whether that same span of four years is appropriate in high school. Um, it, it's probably a different environment, but what I see happening with this work is, first of all, I wanna say thank you because this is exactly what we needed to do with this policy, is first of all, get it legal. Get it right, make sure that the language is there, and I approve of the idea of separating out the, the policy and the uh, and the administrative regulation. But as a board, we haven't had the chance to talk about this issue except here. And I think there was also some question um, that, that I believe perhaps we've resolved, but questions about number two with the employees of City Cat College and questions about whether that should apply to others or not. So I do think that there needs to be appropriate time for us as a board to, now that the language is legal, come to a consensus and an agreement about whether five stays or it gets modified, whether two gets.
Yeah, and, and I'm just saying too, I'm, I'm agreeing with you that we're at this point where we're having to discuss it, where it made sense when we had that, because we've changed this to make it much more clear, changing out of policy versus AR. So we've come to that point uh, you know, with regards to that. But this is, this is the level where we're talking about that, but it's important to have that history behind it as we go forward.
Yes.
And we also asked that this be done early so that we can be ready by the time it came. Unfortunately, we're sitting here talking about this in September. Bravo. That's great.
Yes, and um, exactly. There's no rush that this gets done tonight. It's, it's, we're doing exactly what we wanted to do. We wanted to bring it up, bring up questions, talk about it, and eventually we'll reach a consensus. And um, I know in the LCAP, uh, non-LCAP, I'm sorry, LCFF calculator that Ms. Hernandez provided uh, during second interim, it showed that the projection is that we will be in basic aid for the coming years in community-funded status. So that's another reason I'm being very mindful about this. I, I wanna make sure that I personally, that I do everything I can to get it as right as can be, right? Things change. Thank you, Ms. Sims-Moten, for that history. That makes perfect sense. It was different times. Now, uh, uh, I mean, as a community-funded district, declining enrollment is not as bad as it is for an ADA district. And I do understand, we do get other funding. I completely understand that. However, our bread and butter is the property tax revenue, and I wanna be very mindful of that. And also mindful as well, of course, as of the family, the situations, and that's why we have number six. So, thank you. I hope we continue this discussion. Superintendent.
So just to get the board's direction and to understand where you wanna go to next. Uh, I do have a question for Austin. Can we break up the grade span to be TK three and four to six?
Yep, you can. I don't, I don't think there's anything in the law that prevents that.
Would that help the board with this question, oops, of it being eight years and actually make it more like the foundational grades, which is TK three and then four to, oh, sorry, TK two, which would be three or four years if they started in kindergarten, and then three through six. Would that help with the concern around it being an eight-year span? Yes, I know, for me, it would help it in terms of the um, the grade span and supporting the student, you know, and a limited um, and limited time period.
Can I ask the question, just so we're thinking like, is, would, would five be the guideline to number six?
I was just thinking that too. Maybe this could slot in the number six instead of being its, its own thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking just to think about that, you know, just in terms of either shortening the grade span. So, because if we're gonna, and we do it annually, they have to apply annually. And so they're applying annually up to the final grade that's complete. So I'm just wondering if five can be something, six is like, because we're in community, six is what keeps us financially, you know, we're not having additional burdens for students who are not in this district. But if we have to do number six, could we use number five as the guidelines to do that? For some of the kind of language.
Well, yeah, uh, we could do that. Um, I guess my thinking was we could more or less do away with five and incorporate it as maybe another number and number six if we needed it. Um, I'm not sure it's necessary, but that, that's one option.
Ms. Edison, your thoughts on it?
Yes, I, I believe we could do away with it and six because when we're talking about the development of students, having them transfer from a school base in the middle of the year, if they just move, that, that is something that is covered and could create a hardship for students when we talk about their social, emotional development. So it could be captured there. Um, yeah, so I think that could be a qualifier.
And is that something, I mean, just also as we're asking from this end, the implementing part of that, do you see any additional work on the part of of you as staff to do that?
I think we need to start communicating that with families as soon as possible, because I, I believe that families have created plans for their lives. It's not where their students are attending school.
Right.
So if we are gonna make that shift, that it is not a blanket, if you, we're allowing you to stay through the end of a grade span, um, we need to communicate that as soon as possible. We have this year not approved um, interns because students were at the end of the grade span, following our board policy as it currently stated. So I just think, yes, it can happen and it would just require us to start communicating sooner rather than later to families so they can start planning.
Yeah, yeah, so, board members, Ms. Alvarez.
I, I don't, I'm personally not in favor of putting any promises, any hopes for the parents to say you can stay for the lower grades from TK to third, or I, I say it's an annual review. So this way, as a parent, I know what I'm getting into and I know the decision I'm gonna make as far as uh, I'm, my child can go to TK this year to Adams. And I need to figure out for next year, because I'm not a hundred, I, I, there's no guarantee. I, I'm not in favor of, again, I, I think we need to look at our students in our attendance area at the whole picture, fiscal picture, at the whole human resources picture, and that's what I would hope our policy would reflect.
Mr. Ben.
I, I was just gonna say, I would, I, I don't know whether I'm understanding this, but if you were to remove five and put it into six, does that mean that extraordinary hardship is now defined as not finishing the grade span? That, that doesn't make sense if that's what we're talking about.
I'll give an example. You have parents maybe of, of TK through third graders or just elementary in general who perhaps say, I now have to arrange childcare in Lampark or wherever they're, Lampark or wherever they're living at, because I can't leave my TK through sixth grader at home in the city by themselves. So when you start thinking about younger children, it makes sense if both of their parents are working over here. It does create a hardship. I know we're, in our policy, it explicitly speaks against childcare, but that would be if you're thinking about both parents work over here, small children being left un-supervised.
Then, um, I, I wanna go back and just make a suggestion that, that what you've um, thought this was reading to say, I believe, is in other policies that, that basically says the option is to remain for that last year if it's the next year. So for example, if you transfer out during fifth grade, that you would be extended to finish at that, at the end. Not a guarantee that you get to go through all eight, but if you've been with a cohort for this time and you're close to finishing the, the elementary promotion at sixth grade, that that's where the latitude would be in the last year, not in the first year, so you get all the way. And, and I, this may be what the intent of the language was initially. I'm, I'm not sure.
That's actually legal language. Um, it was actually intended as to finish out the school. So you stay with your school community through the cohort, that would be a change in the language that we can make to mirror what you just stated and what Austin stated.
No, I, I know, I believe it isn't what the language says, but I think that, that that's another, another way of approaching it.
Thank you. Um, so, Ms. Edison, the situation, an example you had just used is at the heart of my concern around this whole policy is I, I think what I was struggling with is number five certainly, in that it, it appeared at the time when we were reviewing these inter-district transfers that those were, yes, they applied each year, but we accepted those um, and they didn't have to come to the board, we just kind of accepted those, right? So that they could finish out the grade span. Yet, we had parents and sometimes they were childcare considerations, but worthy ones that might be associated with uh, extraordinary hardship, whether it was financial or situational, right? The Lampoke example where you have both parents working in Santa Barbara and arranging childcare for uh, TK through uh, uh, anywhere in elementary is really difficult, especially if you don't have family support systems. That was the exact, that's a perfect example. And so I, I think for me, in thinking through this about just equity and what makes sense, and also the fact that we're a community-funded district, I would lean more towards they finish out that grade, or maybe the compromise is if they're close to the final grade in that grade span, that makes sense to me. I can justify that. Um, but I would also, in addition to that, uh, do something with number six to allow for parents in those situations in particular, if it's a high school student, right? And I, I, I don't know if this is the case, but as a high school student, you could probably be home alone by yourself. You can walk home from school and parents trust you to do that um, in, in situations. The childcare burden is not as high as if you have a TK through sixth grade student. And I, I know that's not the case for every family, and so I think number six needs to accommodate that. But I, I find it really difficult to in one sentence say, uh, we'll make an exception for an extraordinary hardship, and in another sentence um, say that it can't be childcare, because some of those extraordinary hardships, whether it is financial or otherwise, may actually be childcare considerations. So my personal stance is, I would like to either see number five say you finish out that year, or if it's the final year in that grade span the next year, then maybe that's the exception and the compromise. And then in number six, do something about that childcare provision, because I think that there are some really extraordinary situations where, or hardships rather, where childcare, uh, childcare is one of those extraordinary hardships that may be difficult for families, especially as we see more families uh, move further and further away from, it could be Lampoke, it could be Santa Maria, and if both parents are driving into town for work, um, that gets pretty difficult.
Yeah, I, I just have an experience that myself with, with my son, when then the, the district shut down where there were no inter-district transfers. So I, we had to make a decision, but fortunately we were able to do that, to move back into Santa Barbara, because yeah, high school can, but you give high school folks, that's too much time alone. We were minimally an hour away, both emergency and just time and, and, you know, and effort uh, with regards. So those are those, those are those critical things that we have to think uh, about too. So, um, but the, the other question I have is, how many of, are we talking about? Inters, how many, how many are we talking about?
So we shared that data at the last, I mean, in the information, so I apologize, it's not, but I'll give you an estimate. It was around a hundred and forty, maybe. Um, many of those were, fell under five. Like, they were students who had been here before. I broke down for you that data. I'll share it again with the superintendent so we can send it out.
Okay, that would be great.
That's a few teachers.
Yep, that's.
Here's the other thing that, you know, board members just would be reminded, uh, you know, this is a critical piece and, and do be prepared for having a hearing for parents coming in uh, to, you know, to, to be able to share, you know, their concerns, um, valid ones, uh, you know, are we saying, what we're saying, we're talking about equity. Are we following through on what we mean to do that? And it, it, you know, I know we're not looking through one lens financially, that's a huge one, so I get that. But I'd just be mindful that, you know, so I think about, you know, the motion for approval tonight, we might want to hold off on that, because I, I, I guarantee there's gonna be parents uh, here. Uh, and, and I think it's important to hear their opinion, because it may then help us figure out a compromise here that works both for them and, and, and that meets our needs as well, you know, down the road, and we're looking at it financially as well, so.
Yes.
If it's not something that needs to be approved tonight, I think we need to, you know, pull it back, because I think we're early enough in the process of looking at it that we can take a little bit more time.
I think, um, that was my next task. Thank you. I, I, I'm personally not ready to approve it tonight. I, I think this deserves more discussion, and also I think parents need to be made aware that this is being discussed and that it may change, so that they have the opportunity to come and address the board and say their piece. Uh, they should know, because it might impact them. Also, um, Board Member Escovedo, I think number three addresses your concern, because number three, it'll, it says here to allow the students to complete a school year. So if, uh, if they're already that year and they move, they would stay. So if uh if they're already that year and they move, they would stay to finish the year. I think that's what you were referring to, right? Yeah, so thank you.
If I can.
Of course.
Um, thank you. Um, Ms. Edison, I know that you mentioned a really important thing is if we are gonna make changes notifying families about any sort of changes and I wonder at which point do we start reaching out to families about the interdistrict transfer if they're already in the grade span, right? Um, at what point in the school year do we start reaching out to those families?
Uh, the window for transfers open in December.
Okay.
Um, and it closes January twenty first, I think this year it is around there. Um, so families will start planning around that time. Um, we'll also have families who have not enrolled in our district that are seeking transfers coming in around that time as well.
Okay, so there is probably more urgency than I think us waiting until the application of sifting through applications, it's notifying families ahead of time and getting the word out. So um doesn't have to be today, I'm not saying today, but.
No, I I was just, I was gonna say let's not wait uh to know that we should maybe be in um like a town hall type of meeting said, this is a policy that we're looking at, we're inviting you here to hear come, so let's not wait for it to come, we know it's coming. So let's just open invitation, get on on the front end of it, you know, uh as we discuss it here. Uh, to be able to have that input, I don't know how to affect your schedule, but just something to think about.
Yes, I definitely wanna make sure that I understand the board's directions here and what we wanna do next. So far I have that you would like us to do some parent communication about this change to policy. Uh, so that parents are aware and that the next time we bring this back to a board meeting, they can have an opportunity to weigh in. I also heard that you want some data on the transfers. I don't know if what Kenya gave you was already enough or if you wanted me to send more data.
Yeah, I thought that was good, yeah.
Send that back.
Yeah.
Um, and now you're saying, uh, and and you just mentioned, uh, we're president, perhaps a town hall.
I'm just saying, trying to figure out, let's invite the parents to be part of this discussion as opposed to waiting for them to come and be here and upset about it. But to have them on the front end of this conversation.
Yes, I mean, we can definitely do that. And would you like to have that be with some board member representation or do you want the staff to handle the town hall? If you wanna hear what parents have to say, I'm just asking because that 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 leads another level and I wanna make sure.
Working this out.
I would say um we're probably gonna have some upset parents. It would only be fair for some board members to be there, not just to put it all on stuff.
My my number, my preference would be that the full, the whole board is there that we invite them and say on October twenty fifth, the board's gonna discuss this policy and it may have some impact on you. Please, if you're interested, it's gonna be at six P M at blah, 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 Santa Barbara Street. We love to hear from you. And the board is here.
Double check, can we have the whole board at the town hall event like this?
I was just trying to get the parents here.
I would just recommend being super clear about what an interdistrict transfer is because people get confused. A lot of times they think you're telling them they have to go to a different school or something like that and it's not what this is about. Um, so yeah, the messaging is important, I guess.
Maybe do do a Q and A, what is it?
I'm hearing the request to hold a special meeting with the board and invite parents to it to hear more about this policy change.
Advertise it, Mr. Ed, you do an excellent job doing that.
My only only comment or question would would be um is there a way that a policy like this can be established on a moving forward basis? In other words, um, as of the approval of this policy, new interdistrict transfers will. And then anyone else in that TK range that had already been offered it under the previous policy with the expectation that it would take them through the grade span would be allowed to complete it. I think that might take the edge off some of the parents that would be upset. And at least allow us to do something that could sort of move up over the years to become a more um a a a more sustainable.
That's a great, we could grandfather people into the policy.
So so I think that at a town hall or even a portion of a a board meeting, we we got a lot accomplished in just this time. I know it's it's quote late, um, but we got a lot com- accomplished. And if what came back to us in in a board meeting, even with people being present was here's some options that we can look at. One is leave it the way it is, leave it the way it's presented. Another is remove five entirely. And others divide the break, the grade levels between K three and four, six. Another is with the last year on that. And then just, you know, so that we have something that we know what we're getting to. It's not a surprise that somebody said, oh, well, what about number two? Let's get rid of that. Let's do these. Um, if we had that and it was, it was more framed of here's what we're trying to accomplish is to choose our our uh our portions here and approve uh uh something that we will all support moving forward.
And so the next time that we discuss this or when you send the data, you already sent a lot of data, so thank you. And I believe you've, Ms. Fernandez also sent the per pupil expenditure. So if we have a hundred and forty uh students, um, let's just say twenty thousand per pupil, I'm I'm exaggerating, I'm rounding it up, that's two point eight million dollars. So I think that data would also be a good, a good data point. Um, but what's a one percent property tax increase of billion dollars? So five percent increase in property tax, that means two and a half percent has already been spoken for. So our gross has just been reduced by fifty percent. So that's something to keep in mind also. Um, and I know it's not a hundred percent a financial decision, I know that.
Already reading my mind.
I I know that, it's a discussion and um I do like that idea, Mr. Banning, of the grandfathering in because people came and they got a transfer approved by us probably. And I I like that idea of phasing out full policy and going into the new policy. I think that would be a good compromise.
So then I would ask with that um a really clever solution, do we need a town hall?
Let me just take that word out. My 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 point is, I don't even necessarily think a special meeting, I just want us to get on top of getting the parents here in this level of discussion. It could be part of a, you know, a a regular meeting, we can manage the agenda to the point where we can have that at the beginning that as as a hearing or, you know, whatever we do, and I don't want to put my word to put something to say that we've gotta go down that road. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying because it is impacting parents as we really discussed here. Um, to get them in on the conversation as we are seeking information at other voice in here, the ones that's most closely impacted by us making this decision. Right? So it doesn't have to be a special meeting, I think we can, you know, unless I'm missing something, you know, that you guys, because you'll know in terms of. Yeah. Oh, we can't hear you, run the mic.
Repeat, I said, what we can do is target the families who currently have an uh an inter and invite them to let them know that the board will be discussing interdistrict, our interdistrict transfer policy and it may impact you. You're welcome to come and share your comments and that at least we're targeting who we, who it actually impacts.
Miss me knows, I just wanna recognize.
I think in terms of what, you know, are the way our discussion is going and being inclusionary and with equity is that, you know, that's what I would favor. Is letting them know and then having it um on the agenda and we can discuss it. And have them, they have the opportunity to give public comment.
I I just wanted to go back to what Gabe said, isn't the idea of grandfathering something that means there are less parents that are impacted? That that was the question. I I certainly think letting the letting the community know that this is a discussions going on, but I don't wanna call all the people and say it might affect you. If what we're saying is uh we're gonna make a change that will affect others or you if you have younger children.
So what if we, uh, oh, sorry.
Okay, so my thing is I would change the messaging. So the parents who are currently in in a transfer, right? The message would be the board is considering a change. And at this time, it's you're not, you will not be impacted. So they're not all here thinking, oh, my gosh, my child can't go to school anymore. Cause I, that would be the parents, it's very scary, right? So the messaging has to be clear and the board agenda item has to be as clear as can be, right? What it is, what is not, what we're hoping to accomplish. And if it was to be approved, when it would be effective, current families, and we can't emphasize this enough. Current families will not be impacted if there's a change, right? So just a basic as can be, like a third grade level for me, right? That it's very, very clear in the board agenda item and I I know your, I I know your intent, Ms. Sims Moten, I really appreciate that. You your intent was to make sure you message, make sure we give everybody that opportunity to speak. And I agree, we can do it in a regular meeting. I don't think we need to have a special meeting as long as we communicate what we are planning on doing.
So I'm still gonna see clarity because now we've moved away from a to a different outcome. I think if we say that we're gonna grandfather policy, I think we can let people know that it's changing, but then that takes away the concern about having people coming to say anything, we could definitely tell them, but if you're saying if we're asking that we change some language here that says this will be grandfathered in. Here are the changes we're gonna make, it'll impact future families that don't yet exist. Then um I feel like we are not really getting to reaching out unless we do all parents outreach, because we went from some parents to all parents, or we went from all parents to some and now to none, because if it's if we're saying it's not impacted, so I'd like to get some clarity from the board on that.
I can see why you need clarity on that, I'm moving clarity on myself. Because we, it's it's part of the discussion, getting to a place where it makes sense and and yeah, and my my first and foremost is to make sure that our parents understand it, because it's confusing up here, we're going back and forth and we think we know a little bit. So so I, that's what I'm saying in in terms of what's the best way to do that, you know, that's something we're thinking about, obviously think so. Let me just clear that we're not gonna be approving this right now. So that's that's number one, we have to be clear, we're not approving this piece, right? And then we're saying that and we're trying to get to give you clearer directions on how we're going to go forth. Because once the grandfather language, I was thinking about that too, but once that that language came talking about that, that changes the whole perspective on how we're gonna look at that. But to to Ms. Alvarez's point, it is very important that, you know, and you already know that, this in terms of the clarity so that folks are not completely confused and whether, you know, the other pieces that also because people are gonna be thinking future wise. Oh, I'm not gonna be do that. So that's another clarity piece that we'll we'll have to do that. And I think that if it's just part of our agenda in the background that we're getting, I think we can come through a regular board process to be able to do that.
While you all are seeking clarity, I see clarity on being clear about is it not impacting current families? Or current enters, because that's different, because there are families who may seek future enters because they have kids currently in the district. So we just need to get clarity around. Are we grandfathering in the enters or the families?
My understanding, my intent is the current student. Not the fam- not the family and the five siblings, the current student who's who is already here. They will follow the same process that it's in place right now where they they if they apply next year, they apply next year. However, whatever current process is in place for those one hundred and forty students. That will continue. Once those one hundred and forty students graduate from whatever grade then any new, right, starting this summer, any new that are not this part of this one forty cohort. Then the new policy will apply. That's, that's how I get it. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I get that. So and it can, yeah, just in terms of those pieces, are you good with that? You know, Mr. Benny, yeah, the clarity, thank you for bringing that because that is two different things. So thank you for bringing the clarity on on that. So let me just reiterate, we're not bringing this, we're not approving this tonight. I just need to keep coming back, right? We're not approving this tonight and we're gonna be giving, we're giving direction um to both, you know, staff and superintendent based on this conversation that we're having, it'll be a part of our normal board meeting and that I think that's the main thing, is communicating that piece out and that getting the clarity, what you said, students versus families or interns versus families.
And then as, and then in the language, sorry, uh, we, I wanna make sure that we'll bring you back new language that will develop that includes grandfathering in. And then also we'll leave you language, we'll bring language that I believe uh, Mr. Benny, you said will you, you'll still have to decide, are you keeping five, are you leaving it as is, are you taking it all completely? And will you consider breaking up the grade span in elementary? And that'll be the next set of uh information we'll bring you. Sound good? The discussion, yes.
Thank you for your patience on that, thank you. Very thank you, board member for good, good.
Mr. Paint, does that give you what you need to draft a new policy?
I've got some ideas already.
Get some popcorn, sit back.
So thank you. Thank you. And my goal is to get us out of here by nine thirty, so let's keep it moving forward, board. Um, so now we've done that, so now we're gonna move to fifteen.
So board members, I am going to read this in slow mo language speed. No, okay. I am very proud. Uh, I am very proud to bring you this resolution. Um, which is to uh the National Observation of Hispanic Heritage Month, which which began in nineteen sixty eight uh as a week, but then was expanded to a a thirty day period uh in nineteen eighty eight. For us to recognize Hispanic heritage um and people from different countries who celebrate the anniversaries of their independence, countries such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, who also celebrate those on September sixteenth and eighteenth. This uh this year's theme is announced by the Council of Hispanic Employment Program Managers was Todos Somos, Somos Uno. We are all, we are one, and it re reinforces the diversity inherent inherent within the Hispanic community as well as the power that comes from being a united community. And I really appreciate that theme because as a member of this community myself, I think it's important that we take on that identity of being one as individuals, being an individual and being part of a community. Uh, I won't read the rest, but I do wanna recognize that Latinx people or Hispanic people have made significant contributions in the fields of education, government, science, law, medicine, entertainment, literature, sports, the military, which also shapes and enhances uh the United States. With that, I know that you know and are aware that sixty percent of our school district population are students who identify as Latinx or Hispanic. And we wanna build and celebrate their strengths and funds of knowledge and have staff and bring staff bring them to um bring celebrations that include their lived experiences, practices, and of course their language. And we're proud to have the dual language program as part of our school district and sustaining that heritage language. So with that, I'm asking the board to approve this resolution. And um if it's approved, of course, we'll ask all staff and students to observe this month by celebrating the histories, cultures and contributions of Americans whose ancestors have come from these countries. Thank you.
Thank you for that, hearing no requests to speak from the public. Board comments? Yeah, have motion.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty three twenty four dash twelve recognizing September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Latinx Heritage Month uh spread forward by the superintendent.
A second.
Okay, so thank you for that, a great action agenda discussion. Um, all right, so we're gonna move, because we've already done H one, we're gonna move to H two, the legislative committee, I know you mentioned that earlier uh in one, so I'm gonna have a quick report from you two.
Well, as uh Board Trustee Alvarez mentioned in her opening remarks, we have been meeting and we have met biweekly for several months now. Uh, to review, track and discuss proposed legislation at the state level. We landed on this uh semi-built sixteen ninety nine, some of them have fallen off the track. And so as as we looked at uh the different bills, we felt that this is an important one to bring to to you today uh for discussion and we're seeking approval. discussion and we're seeking approval to become part of the coalition. Uh, you have copies of this in your packet or in front of you uh that opposes this bill. Um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Alvarez, who's also been doing some work with Senator Limones, as she mentioned. We've been speaking to her um about and I think even as we speak, they're making edits to the bill language, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Alvarez.
So just before you speak, you said approval and it's on here.
Approval to oppose to to
To join the.
To join the coalition and add our name to this coalition in opposition of the bill.
So approval would mean that we need to take a motion and do that, which is not on our action agenda. So would this be direction? So just making sure that we're clear.
I believe you're able to make a motion to take action during a discussion item.
From the floor. Okay, just wanted to be clear with that. Okay, go ahead.
So uh Dr. Maldonado mentioned, we've been following several bills that could possibly have an impact specifically here at SB Unified. And one of the bills that is AB sixteen ninety-nine, which has a noble intent. The intent is that classified employees are promoted within and are given uh a fair opportunity to for growth, for upward movement, which uh I mean, I agree with that a hundred percent, who would not? And I know our district and and speaking with Dr. Vecchio, I know that's a practice that we currently have where we encourage our current employees. I mean, you saw the personnel report today. We approved, I believe, three promotions for ET ETS. So we are currently doing that. The unfortunate part about AB sixteen ninety-nine is that the intent and the actual language do not align. And what makes me say that? What uh what has happened or what could possibly happen if this bill is approved is that it will strip the district, number one, from its right of assignment. Um, we are, we will be told who to hire. Not necessarily who will be the best person for the job, but it will be based either on seniority. And also, it's going to delay the hiring process. One of the concerns that we brought forward as an organization, I also had discussions with CASBO, the California Association of School Business Officials about this. I also had discussions with AXA, their legislative analyst, actually today, just before the board meeting, I was on the phone with Dorothy Johnson. And um as you know, CSBA is also opposing this. One of the issues that we brought up is the impact, the possible impact to special ed. Because that delay, we cannot even start, we cannot even advertise for ten days if this was to pass. So for ten days, we have to offer it to someone internal. And let's say nobody applies or nobody's qualified, then after the ten days, we can go, well, the IEPs don't work that that neatly, right? They don't align with those um deadlines. And if there's a service as is required by the student, we could potentially be out of compliance. And more importantly, the impact to the student. So when we brought that concern to one of the sponsors of the bill, they were really not able to answer our concern. And their answer was that uh, well, you have to wait anyways. If you're a merit district, you have to test the people, so you're already waiting. Well, that even adds to the to it, exacerbates the problem. So long story short, I mean, I have tons and tons of information. If the board's interested, I'm happy to share. What Dr. Maldonado and I are asking is if the board would consider for us as a district, SB Unified, to add our logo in opposition to this bill. Again, the way it's written is gonna have some very negative unintended consequences. And since we started this uh discussions last week, we actually have gained a lot of momentum. Uh, I was just reading an email from CASBO and tomorrow is a Senate day, so they will be going to the Senate offices tomorrow, members of the coalition talking to the senators and say, this is what's happening. In addition to that, members of the coalition and CAS one AXA have met with the governor's office, uh members of the governor's office. And they were very much interested in the impact, especially to our special ed. And for us locally, of course, it's also gonna have an impact on our equity work. So they asked today if the board would consider for us to add our logo saying this is bad policy, it's gonna have a negative impact on us. Uh, Sanover County Office of Education, they've already added their logo about three weeks ago. And that is they asked tonight, and I'm open for uh any questions. And I know Dr. Maldonado also, is there anything else you want to add?
We'll have a discussion. I know that Dr. Vecchio can come up if you have questions as well.
Seeing no request to speak on this, board open for discussion. Questions, Dr. Doctor, he just came back. You know, good luck.
I'll take it. Um, one of the other, so I think one of the other intents with this bill was also to prove, and this is gonna be a question for you, Dr. Vecchio, is um correct me if I'm wrong, it was also to offer opportunity for part-time workers to then add to their current role uh that would then make them full-time workers, thus giving them um access to benefits, uh healthcare benefits and and other benefits. And so I'm my question to you, Dr. Vecchio, is do we offer that opportunity to our staff now?
Yeah, we currently do do that. Um, actually, this is an example, I think, of what happens with the legislature is they they create these ideas around something that's really actually a pretty good idea. Um, to have us look at that first for our employees. And then there's some, then they there's a bunch of stuff in it that adds to the complication of the bill, and then it it trickles down to the practitioners. And it's like, we all know this is not a good scenario for our school district. There's some of these examples, and then there's others. But yeah, I think the attempt to bring people more hours is a really good one. They just went into different spaces too.
Yeah, like you said, that often happens. Um, uh, multiple people get involved in um like uh I guess my question to you that doesn't need to be answered tonight is it would be interesting for us to know, or good for us to know, like, how many people do you have more than one role kind of in that spirit of what this bill is trying to do? I have no interest in supporting this bill. Um, but I think that is one good aspect of this bill that they point out, offering folks the opportunity to stay with our school district, and sometimes that means multiple roles, part-time roles that make it a full-time position for that individual. Um, so at some point in the future, when it's appropriate, I'd love to see that information and then think about um as a board, but as a district, opportunities for those folks that are working part-time right now that may want more hours um at the school district, how do we get the word out about those sorts of opportunities as they come up? Thank you.
No comments. One.
Yeah, I think that for myself, like the, you know, I thought it was gonna be a report discussion, information provided to us, and I wasn't prepared to vote on it. Um, I would definitely, you know, I appreciate like the information that Dr. Vecchio and um Dr. Maldonado are are presenting and and along with um Virginia. But um I honestly thought that it was gonna be a presentation, and then we would vote it and, you know, at another time. I know there's the mention of, you know, like adding our logo, but I wanna make sure that this is something that we wanna support.
Sorry. Yes. Yes. Um, thank you, Ms. Munoz. I appreciate that. Is there any questions that you have that um we might be able to answer? Um, one thing, and then the other thing, when Dr. Maldonado spoke about this, we did say, well, could it be an action item? And I I know you told me could be there either one in action or a report. And on the board agenda item, it did say for the board to consider whether to approve or not approve. That's that was the board agenda item, so the explanation was there. And another concern about this bill is that it doesn't allow for substitutes. So during that ten-day where you cannot hire somebody, it doesn't allow for you to hire a sub. So you're basically completely, you have no one for to support, for example, a child. And that's one point that we made. Um, we asked, and basically, they they said, well, no, the intent is that you do have subs. And the question is, if they that's the intent, then that needs to say that. So hopefully, if they do change the language, they'll add that as well.
Mr. Benny.
I I just want to point out the irony of being a state that prides itself in local control funding formula, and here we have a DHCL, a distance a distant hiring control legislation. Um, I'm entirely opposed to this bill.
So um it just went out of my head in terms of what I was gonna ask, just clarity on terms of timing on on this. Um, still, because it's still in the amendment and editing stage, right? I mean, is this something uh uh let me get the question, what I originally was thinking, how close is this to being passed?
It's very close tomorrow.
Being approved, right?
Yes, so tomorrow, actually, um it's called Call to Action Day, and um the call members of the coalition are gonna be visiting Senate's office. Um, again, I want to express my appreciation for Senator Limon. I mean, she's been really seeking clarification on not only us, our behalf, but on her district, you know, their districts in 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 this county. And tomorrow is the it goes before the Senate. After that, if it passes the Senate, then it goes before the governor. And of course, the governor has the power to veto it. So yes, it is timely. Um, if the board, I mean, we don't have a board meeting till what? By then, it'll be too late.
Yeah, so that's that's an important question. And in terms that I think I don't think, I mean, with the exception of Ms. Munoz saying seeking clarity on on what it was. Um, I was just trying to figure out how likely is it to pass, and it may pass through the Senate, but it gets to the governor. So if this advocating right now can maybe by the time it gets to the governor, it may change his mind. Okay, so that's all.
I will say that on the, just to preface the sites, to be fair and transparent, I did give you a document where we we saw the uh support for this. On our phone call initially, it seemed that there is a lot of support for passing this bill. Obviously, it's supported by um unions and other entities. And um the fact that we sort of kept in the conversation with Mr. Limone could sort of indicate a little bit of a perhaps people are still looking at it, but I also wanna say that there is a lot of support for it.
Right, okay.
So I just wanna make sure that we also understand that there are unions and um the examples they gave in the the documents that I shared with you uh showed, you know, instances in other school districts where they um are having to post, they they are having postings that are not getting filled, because people aren't allowed to do two jobs or other instances like that uh that are mentioned in her email that I sent to you. So I did sense from that phone call that there is a lot of support on the other side for this bill. And I don't know if uh John or if Ms. Alvarez.
Yes, um, that is true. And also, since Friday, there's been a lot of momentum for the for against it.
Against it, okay.
So um, I mean, we don't know, is it likely to pass? Yes, is it likely to not pass? Yes. So we we don't know what has changed between Tuesday and Friday is that the opposition has gained a lot of momentum, and there's more questions being raised. Again, I I think the intent is good. Um, I'm all for inward inward mobility, upward mobility and um promoting staff. Is this just, it's not gonna achieve that, unfortunately. It's gonna be more harm than good.
Point well taken. And I was, as you were just saying, I was just thinking in terms of the opposition, or it doesn't pass, maybe is that we're not supporting this version of the bill. And if we can get to a better version of the bill, then the intent can be met and what we're looking at that. So that might be, you know, Miss Munoz, something to think about too. This version of bill is not in its best version. And so if the opposition says go back and rewrite it, and it can come out better, that might be something we can think about too.
And that's a really good point, Ms. Sims Moten, because that's exactly what's been happening. They've been making edits because of the opposition's not saying, no, we don't want it. No, the 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 version, it's not where it needs to be. Perhaps they come up with a final bill that it's better, and that includes the concerns. So, yeah, they've rewritten it several times. Maybe they're still updating it. I don't know.
So.
Yeah, is the um, what is it? The I'm sorry, the teachers' union and the um the classified, you know, employees' union, are they for it? Um.
I don't know. I don't have that that piece, but the but you to your point, Dr. Maldonado, you were just speaking that to to give fairness to the other side, that the unions are for it, looking at at that. Um, but you know, sometimes we're looking at what's the fact and what's the real, when it really gets down to be implemented, what's it really gonna be like? You know, because you're looking through emotion, you're looking through all of those things, as it should be in terms of, you know, you know, passion behind what you're doing. But I think as we're discussing this today, I think it's again, it's like this version isn't meeting the intent of it, because I don't think we're disagreeing about the intent. Uh, you know, we wanna make sure that they're getting what they need, be able to to be in advantage of that. But for today, I think we're asking, what I'm hearing from both Dr. Maldonado and Ms. Alvarez, is that this version of the bill we're we're recommending opposing this version.
Yeah, so I'm fine with, you know, with the discussion in terms of, you know, not being um not approving of the way the bill.
Is currently. Um, so I I'm not figuring how do so how do we do that as a motion or direction or consensus, how we handle that? It'll have to be a roll call? Okay, so. So motion from the floor.
Okay, I move that we that Sanover Unified School District joined the coalition to oppose AB sixteen ninety-nine, the way that it's written. And that we add our logo to the other school, public school districts, community colleges, and state agencies that are opposing the version of the bill.
Okay. Yeah, have a sec.
One second.
There's been motion and second. I do need to do a roll call. Mr. Benny?
Aye.
Ms. Munoz?
Aye.
Mr. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Alvarez?
Aye.
Ms. Sims Moten?
Aye.
Motion touches five zero. Okay, thank you. Again, great discussion, uh, board.
And thank you to Dr. Maldonado. We've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. And thank you, Dr. Vecchio. When I sent you that email asking you your professional opinion, it was very helpful, so I appreciate your time on that. Thank you.
Okay, so we've now come to the end of our evening. Here, we are before ten and gonna be before nine forty-five. So as we look at coming events, um you see that on your agenda. Coming events that are coming up and also future agenda items, and also that the board governance calendar is always up to date to figure out where we're doing with different things um to know where we are on that. And our next meeting is a board is on September twenty-sixth, and I'd like to conclude and oh, oh, okay, the next board, regular board meeting, September twenty-sixth. Okay, just checking, is that right? Okay, just wait, you know, right, good. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. But also be reminded of the special board on September twenty-third, Ms. Alvarez.
Uh, Dr. Maldonado, would you please um? And I don't know if this is for you or Dr. Martinez. It was mentioned that EML students at San Marcos High School, there's a high level and they need more support from the district. Would you follow up on that and email us some information? What that was about?
I will follow up, and that has been reported to the board. In previous reports, we have uh reported that there has been an increase of newcomers, and we have provided extra uh monies. I will find out exactly what is the additional support they're seeking.
Yes, I do remember that. Maybe they need more. I don't know. Thank you.
I think it would be, miss, forget me. Thank you, cabinet. I will conclude the same way that I began. Every child, every chance, every day. Includes her. Thank you.